Hello? Hello? Lord, I'm just anxious to get this behind.
Ms. Latimer, you have one more opportunity here. Can you unmute yourself or mute yourself and do something to effectively communicate?
Okay, can you hear me now?
Can hear you now, yes.
Okay, great. Okay, thank you. My name is Connie Smith Latimer and I'm with the Healthy Together Program in West Willow. And we're wondering, first of all, has there been a date set for the RFQ? In terms of the senior millage? And we are very much interested in participating. We're wondering, we are an organization, however, we do not have a senior center. But we've been serving residents nonetheless. We've been serving them in terms of improving their healthcare. And now we're about to embark upon a program to help them improve their houses, which also impacts their health. So we are wondering if there's any kind of leeway where you give to organizations that are currently serving the seniors, whether they have a senior center or not. So that's kind of my two main points of questioning. Can you hear me?
Yep, Ms. Latimer, we can hear you. Your time is up. There's not a follow-up at this meeting, but there will be Commissioner follow-up session at the full board meeting. So I invite you to ask your question there as well, if it is not addressed in the substance of the discussion. Anyone else online for a public comment?
No, there's not, Chair.
Great. Move then to item three, report from the county administrator.
Thank you, Chair. I was going to save this item for the full board meeting, but given that we have representatives from the Sheriff's Office here, I want to just lift up how great it was to see the ceremony this morning at the Sheriff's Office. It's a partnership between the Sheriff's Office and the Washtenaw Intermediate School District. And it focused on 36 formerly or currently incarcerated individuals. They received their graduation certificates today. Just want to say how wonderful it was to see that process, that framework play out. Just to give you guys just a little bit of statistics. In addition to the 18 that received their graduation certificates today, there are also 36 certificates earned in food handling, OSHA, customer service, sales and supply chain, inventory, logistics, HIPAA operations and profit, business retail, food management, Red Cross, first aid and AED. It was phenomenally, it was just a phenomenal day today. And I just wanted to say thank you so much to the team at the Sheriff's Office. This has been going on since January of this year. So I think Crystal Campbell's in the room. I just wanted to say thank you and please pass it on to the Sheriff's Office. That concludes my report.
Great, thank you. Move to item four, report from the BOC liaison. Any report at this time?
No report tonight, Chair.
Great. Move then to our first discussion item. And I'll call Derek Jackson, our racial equity officer, up to join and present a bit on the Youth Assessment Center. Derek, I'll turn it over to you, but before I do, do you have a preference in terms of getting through your presentation for Q and A? Or do you want us to interrupt as they come to us?
I think you can interrupt as it comes to you. Absolutely. If you can pull up the presentation. Thank you, Commissioners, while the presentation is being loaded. I appreciate the time to talk about the Youth Assessment and Resource Center. Terrence is with me today. Several months ago, as we really started to dive a little bit deeper into the Youth Assessment Center, asked if Terrence could be assigned a special project to really help and assist. And so together, we've been taking some of the good work that's been done over the last really three or four years and kind of getting us to this particular point. Can you start from the beginning, please? All right, so I'm not going to spend, you can go to the next slide. I'm not going to spend a lot of time on this here, but I do want to just show what we are calling the Washtenaw County Racial Equity Blueprint. At some point in the future, hopefully I'll be back before you to talk a little bit more detail about what this is. But it's 13 things that we think if we do, we can actually move equity into action. So for the last seven or eight months, I've been really assessing the Equity Office, looking at the Equity Policy, meeting with departments and community members around what we've done in the past and where we are now. The policy that you all set years ago was about individual growth, institutional change and structural transformation. These 13 things really get us to that particular point. It's not. So tonight, we're going to talk about number 10, the Youth Assessment and Resource Center. Before we jump into it, the picture you see before you is a young man named Keon Washington, who back in 2014, at 17 years old, was shot and killed. And I share this story because a day or two after he was shot, I went to sit on his porch with his mother. And his mother, you've probably heard me share the story around the community before, made the comment to me that I love my son. I'm not shocked by what happened to him. And this quote, I saw the destruction of my son coming, was what she said to him live in the article about his death. And I shared it because at the time, when she said that, it was kind of bone rattling for me. And since that moment, I've been searching for what are the things that we can do in our community to help a mother like that out? Who says, while she's sitting on the porch the day after her son was murdered, that I wish I could have got help for my son when he was in middle school. I saw something changing, but I couldn't figure out what to do to get the help. And a few years later, he died. And so today, what we're going to talk about is one of those tools. And this is why we've been working so hard to think about what kind of tools can we present in our community?
And so I just want to take a minute just to point to this slide. This slide captures the heart and the essence of what the Youth Assessment and Resource Center sets out to do. It's not just assessments, right? It's the first thing that comes to our mind when we hear it. But the idea of a Youth Assessment Center and Resource Center, what we've been talking about, is to connecting youth to community, not systems. So that's just the general overview of like what it is. But the goal is to create early intervention pathways for each and every kid that may be experiencing some things that we know is something that will lead them one day to incarceration. And so the Youth Assessment and Resource Center will serve as a centralized hub for assessments and connections to resources in the community. And the model emphasizes restoration over punishment. And so that's the biggest thing is like, we're trying to look for opportunities to give youth the opportunity to do something other than fall into that pipeline.
And so when people hear Assessment Center, you think about, you know, social workers doing assessments are there, but it isn't just that, right? It's about diversion, it's about prevention. You could take out Assessment Center and throw any name on it. And quite honestly, when we get to the right point in this process, it won't be called the Youth Assessment Center. We'll really talk to families and community and young people about what would we call this thing and what do we name it? But the model is a Youth Assessment and Resource Center.
Something I've been saying is that we can see the Youth Assessment Center as the front door to support, not just the back door to incarceration, you know, from incarceration. And so this is just a graphic we created just to talk about the Youth Resource Center, Youth Assessment Resource Center. And the idea that we are trying to create more upstream solutions for kids not to fall into these punitive solutions that we have in community. And so our vision for the Youth Assessment and Resource Center is that there will be new avenues for youth to get the resources that historically have only been available to them once you have reached the bench. And once you've sat in front of a judge and that judge has said, okay, these are now what we're asking you to do. And so the goal of the Youth Assessment and Resource Center is to have early intervention before things, before youth is hit with the decision of entering into juvenile detention and/or entering probation.
I mean, for years, folks would say to me and others, I need some help for my kid. They would say, you got to get them connected to the system. And there was a name that they would always throw out, Bill Malcolm, who some of you know, who worked for the county for many, many years. They would say, you got to get him to Uncle Bill, right? But that meant you had to get him in the system to get the resources. And although the court and the DigiCenter, quite honestly, have done some phenomenal things over the last couple of years, that's still within the system. We're talking about upstream, so the kids, families, teachers and schools, or police themselves can make a direct referral to this new way of thinking about getting people access.
And the last thing I'll add is just that Derek shared And the last thing I'll add is just that Derek shared the story of Ms. Washington and the impacts that hit her son. And that just reminds me that the Youth Assessment Center will exist to bridge gaps for each family, right? These families see warning signs early. They see their children on a slippery slope that they know the trajectory is bad, right? But having a Youth Assessment and Resource Center where parents can identify these areas and go and find resources is extremely important.
So just to give you some background and history, so in twenty-sixteen, we started working on the adult system. We did this adult system map. And I keep saying that if we can do these things in the adult system, we should definitely be able to do them in the youth system. So things around very healthy reentry systems, giving officers and deputies diversion and deflection tools, providing avenues for folks who have been incarcerated to work. We've done all those things in adults. And it's had a pretty significant impact. We haven't been able to do those things in the youth system. So in twenty-nineteen, we started mapping out, this is when the process for the Youth Assessment Center began, was in twenty-nineteen. We started mapping out the entire juvenile justice system and how a young person and their family would navigate through that system. In twenty-twenty-two, Lisa Gents, who was leading this project with CMH, they were great to step up to the plate and lead it to this point. They came before the board, gave a presentation, you all took action and allocated a hundred thousand dollars a year to go towards the investment of the Youth Assessment Center. That planning team was developed at that particular point. And we've been working with the National Association of Assessment Centers since then around technical assistance to build up to the point that we're going to describe to you today. These are just members who are, who've been a part of that planning group. Those in blue, Ms. O'Grady from Juvenile Court, Jason Smith from Michigan Council Youth Justice, the new sheriff, Ms. Dyer, and public defender Delphi Simpson are brand new. They've only attended one meeting. So they are just learning about the framework, but everyone else on here has been a part of creating what you're going to see here momentarily. I've just put this in here. I won't talk about it just for time's sake, but this just gives you a sense of what the work has been. Community Mental Health has funded the technical assistance contract with the National Assessment Center. And so they've walked us through this community mapping process that we've been working on for the last couple of years, these interviews, and to the point that we are today. So why Washtenaw? I think people, we're going to share some data points here momentarily, but high rates of school absenteeism, when you compare us to the rest of the state. I don't know what it is about Washtenaw County, but our absenteeism rates are fairly high compared to other parts of the state of Michigan. Youth violence, historical racial and economic inequalities within the system itself, lack of pre-system diversion and deflection options, although we are getting slightly better in the prosecutor's office to the courts, to the detention center, but there's still a lot more that can be done. An increased need for behavioral health services and that evolving social safety net funding architecture. Lots of people know that the childcare fund law has changed, but also Medicaid is now reimbursable for services that could be preventative and help to fund this work. Another one that is really important here in Washtenaw is that the Washtenaw Equity Partnership, I know many of you understand what that project is, but a group of community members came together to say like, what could we recommend to change the criminal justice system? Hundred-and-twenty-two total recommendations, forty-three of them are impacted if we were to do a Youth Assessment and Resource Center here in Washtenaw County. And twenty-five of those recommendations are related to young people, and they would all be accomplished if we did the Youth Assessment and Resource Center. Same thing on the state level. There was the Michigan Task Force for Juvenile Justice Reform. They had seventy-three total recommendations around the juvenile justice system. Forty-seven of those seventy-three recommendations we could accomplish here in Washtenaw County. So it does fit into what our state has been recommending us to do, but also what some of our local community members have been asking us to do.
So this was back to me, but the proof of concept that we talked about, just kind of getting to the target population of who this will serve, it will focus on youth at the front door, those at risk but not yet deeply involved in the system, right? And so target populations would include youth facing arrests for low-level misdemeanors, students with repeated handle with care notices or chronic absenteeism, as Derek shared earlier, young people struggling with behavioral challenges or returning home from placement. Time and time again, we heard stories of youth who were coming back to detention. I don't know if many of you know, but I spent the earlier years of my career with Washtenaw County at Children's Services. And time and time again, we will see kids come back from placement. And they would just, they wouldn't have the relationships they had before they left. They wouldn't have those opportunities to come and connect with parents the way they used to. And they felt distant from their community and from their support groups. And so this would address those young people struggling with behavior challenges or returning home from placement. And then lastly, families proactively seeking help before system contact. This approach ensures that the Youth Assessment and Resource Center reaches the right youth at the right time with the right interventions. And so we've talked about it time and time again, is that we want community to be a support to these youth, not just a system. And so it's about identifying needs early for academic, behavioral and emotional supports.
So just a couple of quick data points, about seventy percent of the children involved in the juvenile justice system in Washtenaw County are black kids. So we talk about racial inequities, which is why you see now the Youth Assessment and Resource Center sitting within the Racial Equity Office to kind of pick up the charge here. It is about equity and transforming the juvenile justice system. But a Youth Assessment Center should not be run by a provider, right? You need a kind of third party, not having any real investment in what services, but really making the best decision for young people to refer them to services. And with only seventeen percent of our population being black kids who are ten to seventeen, you can see the tremendous racial inequity and disparities there. One of the other data points, handle with care, if you don't know, is a system that officers around the community, if they have a scene that they're on and there's a school-aged child there and they see, and that that school-aged child has seen something traumatic, they do a quick little handle with care notice. They say, alright, little Annie, Somerville is at school, what school does she go to? I'm going to send a handle with care notice to that principal. And all it does is alert the principal that little Annie may have seen something last night that was traumatic. Doesn't mean the school does anything unless Annie's behavior starts to change that day, then the school can say, alright, what happened? This is the data from February of twenty-eighteen, when we began the program through April of twenty-twenty-five. You see on the left that the notice is received, that top line is, you've had thirty-eight hundred kids who received just one notice, handle with care. You go all the way down the list, there's a kid in our community that has had a handle with care notice sent twenty-two times. So that starts to tell you something about that home environment, right? This doesn't mean that every kid on this list who's had a handle with care or someone who's had five handle with cares necessarily needs additional services. I grew up in a community where I probably would have gotten four or five of these, but I had a lot of resilient factors around me to help loving family, supportive adults in my life. So it doesn't necessarily mean we're going to reach out to every one of these kids, but there may be some of these young people that are early identified that a Youth Assessment and Resource Center could be a mechanism to make sure that they have access to those resiliency factors. So we created the system years ago, and now we're getting to see some of those young people who are experiencing ongoing trauma might be some of the young people who we would be able to work with. Just a sense of chronic absenteeism, forty-two thousand five hundred and forty-four students in Washtenaw County, thirty-one percent of them are chronically absent. That's about thirteen thousand students. And we have, on average, they miss forty-two days of school. I think it's like a hundred and eighty days of school. So if you're missing forty-two days, you're missing a significant amount of school. And again, when you compare our numbers, according to Naomi, the WISD superintendent, you know, we've got some pretty high absenteeism numbers when you compare us to the rest of the state. These are also young people. There are work being done with the bridge team at the WISD, but they would partner with us around some of this work as well. You can't even read this. If you come to my office, you'll see that this is my wall outside my office in the equity office, because this is the, this is the map. And the one thing you'll notice on the map is that there are no off-ramps. Now, the last year or two, we have a couple of smaller off-ramps, so people are doing good work. They're just not large enough off-ramps. So the map here and all the data points and the comments that you can't even read, really just pay attention, you don't see any arrows heading off. Once you're in the system as a young person, you're in it. And we haven't pulled the data recently to look, but we used to call it graduation, where you graduate from the youth system and you come right into the adult system. In Washtenaw County, we've had a high rate of graduation from the youth system coming right across the street to the adult jail. This is one way to try and change that narrative. And again, I want to stress, our courts in the juvenile justice system, if you haven't done a tour of the youth youth center with their day program, they're doing phenomenal new work. This doesn't take anything away from that. This is another added tool further upstream, so that hopefully kids don't have to ever get to go to the date program or do some of the great diversion stuff that the court is doing. Couple of quick other pieces, then an assessment center is really about prevention and diverting youth from child welfare and juvenile justice systems and getting it through a single point of contact. That's what it's really about. It's about identifying those underlying issues and it's partnering with families and community-based organizations.
So Derek's going to fly through some of these different statistics. But what, so I went to NACO earlier this year, and we went to the annual conference. And while there, we had a chance to connect with one of the leaders of the Philadelphia Youth Assessment Center. It was, this person was one of the panelists. We talked, we spoke. And then she goes, I want to take you through a tour of our facility. This was on a Sunday afternoon. And it was Commissioner Hodge who joined me on that trip. And we, we had an opportunity to see firsthand the work that these folks were doing on the ground. And while you leave Washtenaw County, you quickly see how our resources, how much we put into our youth and how much we care. Because the picture wasn't as pretty, right? But the work that they talked about that was done at that level to divert youth was working and they seen a lot of change. And so these statistics just shows like a little bit of the changes happening across the nation around these best practices.
And it's the best practice about all around the country. I think twenty-eight of the eighty or so counties in Ohio have a Youth Assessment Center. The state has kind of taken some of their equivalent childcare fund dollars and used it as a way to promote Youth Assessment Centers. Eighty-six percent of the youth in this Nevada Youth Assessment Center did not escalate into the justice system. So think about that. Eighty-six percent of the kids who come through those doors not going into the juvenile justice system would be pretty significant. This one just shows all the decreases around petitions, placements and status referrals. They decreased pretty substantially in Louisiana and in Nebraska, where they were using their juvenile justice system to really house a lot of kids. It allowed them to divert and save about two million dollars a year. So just wanted to give some examples of around the country, the impacts that a Youth Assessment and Resource Center can have. Last couple of slides, the architecture is to be housed within the Racial Equity Office for a three-year proof of concept. I am not in the, you know, where I'm at in my career, good intentions don't really matter to me. Doesn't. If it's not moving the needle, stop it, move on from it. So we're only asking for three years proof of concept. We know it works in other communities, but will it work in Washtenaw and how will it work? And I mentioned that this started, CMH was, Lisa Gents was kind of overseeing it. But in essence, they always knew this wasn't really for them to run. And they've asked for it to be placed in administration. Administrator Deal said, if it's within the Racial Equity Office, let's continue to build this out and at some point make the decision, do we move this forward or not? So today is really just an update. We're not here with any official ask. It's just to let you know where we are at this particular point. It's about a braided funded model to think about some of those public safety and mental health dollars, to think about childcare fund dollars, to think about the hundred thousand that you guys have already set aside, to think about philanthropy, being able to be braided in to do some of this work. And it's about a partial reimbursement for services provided. So oftentimes, we fund a nonprofit, tell the families to find that nonprofit. What we're talking about here is something different. Find out what the best service is for that family and that young person. Send them there to that service and be able to provide some partial reimbursement to those nonprofits for doing that work. And then this hub versus a centralized model, we're not talking about a big building sitting somewhere where kids are dropped off. We're talking about various community-based organization partners where families and kids can walk into. One of the things the kids made very clear is like, we're not interested in going to some, you know, clinical setting. I would love to walk into the new community center, literally kids said this, and be able to talk to someone about some of these issues. I would love for my mom to be able to walk in and be able to talk to someone, not just me as a young person. So some of this is really built around a hub versus a centralized model. One of the things we really do want to do at this point is use some of that hundred thousand dollars to hire someone as a program manager to start implementing and building out the framework. But this is just, a Youth Assessment Center is not a heavy staff effort. We're a bridge, and that's all it would be. We'd be managing the contract to be a bridge to the community-based organizations. It's the organizations that would be doing the work out in the community. I won't even go through all of the goals. I'll just say it's about prevention. It's about diverting young people. It's about changing and transforming our systems, building accountability and being a statewide leader. The last part I'll say is, you know, Jason Smith and the Michigan Council on Youth Justice is partially around the table now because he, his organization has been charged with, how do we help implement the new state law around, not just the childcare fund, but juvenile justice transformation? And so he's very interested in how this might be a statewide model moving forward. Last but not least, this is Mr. Deshaun Leath when he was eleven years old in two thousand and six. And I won't tell you the full story, Deshaun, many of you know him, but this was a quote he said to me about two weeks before we lost him. Because he learned about the Youth Assessment Center. And he knew from eleven years old, if you ever heard his story, he was in our detention center. He was in Ozon House back, you know, years ago. He knew about how the system worked. And he said, we have to do this. I'm telling you, we have to. So I've said to him, back then, we will do it. And it's one of my personal motivations of like, why I think this is such a really, really important piece for us to do. The folks who hurt the most and know most about our system have been impacted. They will tell you that this is really an important thing to do. And that's all we have for you.
Great, thank you, gentlemen. I know I have a few comments and so forth, but I saw Commissioner Robbie and Commissioner Hodge. Others, if you have questions, just give me the nod. We'll start with Commissioner Robbie.
Could you actually go back to that last slide that you guys had? I just, the one that I think you guys like skipped over it at the end there.
Oh, next steps.
What did that? Next steps, yeah.
These were just some of the steps that we've gone through in the past, administrative approval, Terrence getting assigned to the project. We started a coordinate, we got the coordinated committee back together, thumbs up, thumbs down. So they gave the thumbs up on just continuing to push forward. We have presented to the ELT, our executive leadership team in the past, board leadership, I think last week. And then today is the working session. Our next step would be getting funding for that project manager.
Okay, and then could you go back to the slide where you had like all the different partners that you're working with? I think it was like a grid.
It was at the very, very beginning.
Slide six.
Yeah. The planning group. That one. So I, so the question that I had, so all of this sounds fantastic. Have you guys been working with our youth commission at all?
Have not. No, and you'll see, actually, it's not on this slide. In the, there's another document that is like the framework printed out document. I think you guys got a copy of that document. In there, when you see this list, you actually see kind of in italics, you see the youth and their families. Because one of the things we talked about doing is like, how do we actually get them around the table as we build this framework out? But they have not been at this table yet.
I think that that seems like something that should be included in this process, like we have a pre-established youth commission that I think could be really important to plug in, to have youth voices, the people that we've sort of appointed to have that voice as an appendage of the county. And then, as you're saying, I think bringing youth voices of the, you know, affected youth that are wanting to connect to this as well. Other, you know, I think those are both good avenues to get youth voices involved in this, but I just, I think that's the biggest gap that I'm seeing with this table, just having more youth voices involved. And then also thinking about the organizations in our community that are already doing some of this. I know you, you did mention it in your presentation a few times of like working with some of the service providers like Ozon House and Neutral Zone. You didn't mention Neutral Zone, but hopefully that's one that you'll consider working with too. But that was my main comment, was just making sure that there's youth voices at the table.
So to that, there were, there, early on, there was significant outreach to a lot of youth. We did multiple youth listening sessions. There were times when there was an average of fifteen young people in a room. They did over three different listening sessions. And great input came from them. And they kind of lifted up the importance of having this hub model, not just feeling like it's a clinical setting and things like that. They wanted it a part of community with people and faces they knew and programs they typically would engage in. But the youth commission, great point.
Yeah, I just think having some like youth leadership involved in like the decision-making too. So, thank you.
Go to Commissioner Hodge.
Thank you, Chair. Hey, thank you both for the presentation. Really excited to see this moving forward. And thank you to everybody that's been working on it over years. I know this has been a project that a lot of time and effort has gone into. I also wanted to thank you again, Terrence, for the tour that we took in Philly. If you want to speak a little bit more about that, I think that would be really helpful for people. One of the things I thought about doing the tour while we were there is how different their system is from ours and how we're really positioned well at this point to be a leader in the space, even though we're Even though we're starting, like we're emerging from it right now. But you and Derek and others have put a lot of time into learning a lot about the various different kinds of assessment centers across the country. And I think we're gonna come out right, come out the gate with best practices right away. They have a great center there and it's great that they're doing it. But there are certain things that we're gonna do differently here. So could you speak a little bit about how in a lot of places, there's a closer carceral system connection than we will have here. And some of the, the benefits which are significant to us not having that connection.
For sure. I'll try to do my best to capture that. It was Commissioner Hodge. We, while on that tour, he'll tell you, Lisa Verone, the director of that program there was extremely helpful and transparent about the work that they've done. Prior to opening up their assessment center, it took years, right? It took years to get those political folks on board, then getting the people that are doing the work, getting the community on board. It took time. It's not easy work to lift up. But I'll say with the National Assessment Center group that we're on, we sit on a group every Monday. We talk through what are some of the challenges across this, across every state in the U S. And talk about like, what are you experiencing? What are things that can help you improve? There is a group of folks that, that are really behind this work. It's been helpful to be able to lean on them for resources, for their experience. But we are positioned really well to do this work. Just, and I said it earlier. The way Washtenaw County is set up, you know, we can hit this running and at full speed. The youth center right now, they are doing assessments. It's something that the new childcare fund has implemented into their rules. Is that whenever a youth enters into these facilities, that they are going through assessments and things like that. So I think we're positioned really well to do that work and under the new childcare fund rules. With increasing reimbursement for, you know, in-home care versus only reimbursing those that are in detention. It, it really helps us to be able to hit the ground running.
I, I would add too that one of the things that will be really beneficial for ours when we started is that for a lot of youth assessment centers, correct me if I'm wrong, the front door or the entrance into receiving the programming is through the carceral system. And that is not gonna be the way that we're gonna structure it here.
Correct. Have an opportunity to do parental referrals, teacher referrals. Really gets ahead of the rest of how a lot of places are doing that work.
Okay. Well, I want to thank you again for the swiftness that you put the tour together. You sort of glossed over, but you attended one of the sessions at NACO. The person that gave us the tour was on the panel and then like boom, like that, now we're going and checking it out. So that was incredibly helpful to be able to get there and be able to see it firsthand. And it allows me to be in a better position to advocate to do it because I've been able to experience and see an example of it firsthand. I got a question for you too, Derek, so don't, don't stop. Don't get away yet. But go ahead. You got, you got something to bring? So what, what would you want us thinking about at this point in the process? Cause this has been something that's been going on for quite a while. What do you want the nine of us thinking about at this point? Your mic is off.
I think part of it is really just about with all the other considerations you all have around budgets and you're gonna have a budget presentation here coming up next. You know, where does this fit into that larger architecture? We have a lot of priorities and needs. And so just really that deliberation. I think there is something about once and for all, trying to really transform the juvenile justice system and live up to a lot of these ideals that we have in Washtenaw County. Hopefully some of the stories share a little bit of, of like how powerful that can be. There's a lot of things we could be doing in Washtenaw County. I'm only interested in tackling those things that are actually gonna move the needle. That's why I said, you know, I'm not interested in good intentions anymore. It's about like, what are we actually doing? So I just kind of want to let that sit with you. There are a lot of things we could be doing. But the things that hopefully from the racial equity office, we're gonna bring forward are the things that we really believe could really make a shift and transform Washtenaw County. So it's really budget considerations at this point. And at some point, we just need to make the decision as a county, are we really going all in on this thing or are we not? And that's a decision you all have to make. But we would be here to make sure if we move forward with it, that it's gonna be really well done.
You mentioned briefly the braided funding model. Could you talk a little bit more about the childcare fund and how significant that those funds would be available for this?
Well, I think that we really need to, so the state itself just changed how the childcare fund can be used. There's some prevention dollars further upstream now that can be reimbursable in the childcare fund. But that's also brand new. And so figuring out what are those limitations? We do know that a youth assessment center, at least in theory, does fit potentially within there. But this is still part of the framework that we really need to build out. But there is the potential by law to have some of the childcare fund reimbursed for some of these services. To what extent, what services we offer in Washtenaw County, all that is still TBD. Really still needs to be built out, but that is something that's new here in Michigan that was never a, a part of our process before.
So if I'm understanding it correctly, we look all the way back to when you first, we started going down this path. We, that funding was not available.
Correct.
So now we're looking at having access to a funding source that we didn't have before.
Absolutely, yeah.
Last thing I, I'll say is both of you, the colors for the suits, very good combination.
Appreciate.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
They are lovely suits, yes. And, and building on that. Derek, I looked at my email just now. I'd sent out an email back in January of two thousand twenty-two to some of the stakeholders, talking about the importance of youth assessment center. And trying to get that wrapped in as a structurally funded item in our budget. Everybody at this table saved two had the wisdom to support that in two thousand twenty-two. When we started funding it at a hundred thousand dollars. Crystal and Annie joined us and, and have funded it in budgets to that point. And so to your question now, what do we want to do? I'd say the most effective use of human services dollars is on the front end of life. And it's in coordinated fashion. And that's exactly what the, the Y A C or the Y A R C now, the Y R C can do. And I'd also say that we've already invested three hundred thousand dollars of finite resources into this. And so to some degree, not just because it's the right thing, but because we want to make good on our investment already. I, I, I think we need to go forward because I think this really does have the potential to transform lives. To lessen interaction, not just with the carceral system, but with the social service system as well. So that, that is where I'm at and, and, and looking forward to it and really appreciate the work. Both you gentlemen have done and want to appreciate the work. Trish and Lisa, again, especially at CMH did to spur some of this discussion. And again, colleagues here at the board table, we sort of took a risk in, at the end of twenty-two to start funding it really beforehand, almost like a deposit. It's, it's, it's paying dividend and it's going to pay more dividends down the line. So those are my quick thoughts. Derek, you?
I just one piece. I started rambling. We have a special guest online who just wanted to say a couple of quick words to you guys, if it's okay. To let him chime in for a quick second.
I was not aware of a special guest, but I, 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 I wonder if it's not somebody I know. Yes, please.
Prosecutor Savit is, is out of the area, but wanted to chime in just to say a couple of words, cause he has been at the forefront of this work. Prosecutor, are you there?
Can you hear me?
We can.
All right. Well, 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 thank you. I didn't know I got promoted to a special guest. I really appreciate that. I, I, I just wanna, first of all, thanks to Derek and Terrence and everybody from CMH for spearheading this work as well as the board for its commitment to this work. You know, I wasn't planning on leading with this actually. But Administrator Dill's statement at the opening about the graduation today at the, at the jail really ties in well with this because I, I attended the graduation. It was great. And, you know, quite candidly, the graduates there were very familiar names to me and to our office, dating back to when they were juveniles. And it was great to see them, you know, while they were in the jail, getting degrees, getting you know, training on job skills and really hopefully turning a corner. But one of the things that we hear so frequently, and I know law enforcement hears from parents is why do we have to wait for our kid to run afoul of the law or get into trouble to get them help? We know when they're going down the wrong path. And it's a constant frustration that, you know, when you have a kid that maybe going down the right, wrong path and you see it as a parent, that kid has to get arrested and get charged with something in order to get them resources. From the prosecutor's office's perspective on this, I, I, I think this is important in a couple of ways. One is, there, there is a lot of stuff, a lot of adolescent misbehavior. Warning signs that frankly doesn't ever rise to the level of crime, but we can see them going down that path. And it's far better to have an option where a family or school member or even a kid themselves can get resources early before committing a crime. And that's exactly what the assessment center model provides for. The other thing is, you know, as I think members of the commission know, we generally do not charge really lower level adolescent misbehavior, even when it does cross the line potentially to something that we could charge. You know, you think things like curfew violations or, you know, there's like, there's a crime called incorrigibility or, you know, adolescent experimentation with drugs or alcohol. And the, the reason is because we know that the carceral system, the juvenile system can be traumatizing and can actually, you know, data supports this, set a young person back and make it more likely that they're going to commit future criminal offenses. But in a lot of those cases, we, we should be doing something. And the assessment center model allows for that to happen without imposing that trauma. Without sort of perpetuating the school to prison pipeline that we see. And in the long term, I mean, this is an investment that, that, that I know is going to pay dividends. Because frankly, if it works, we'll have fewer people in the jail that are, you know, need to have that graduation ceremony because they will never have been in there in the first place, right? So it's something that I think is, is really a great opportunity for a community and, and understanding of course that budgets are tight and that we're in a position where federal and state funding is potentially drying up. You know, I just, I, I just want to say that sustained investment in this type of work, if you look at the if you look at the communities that have done it, really those are the communities that see sustained reductions in crime, that sees healthier communities. And starting as early as possible with young people is tremendously important. So I, I just wanted to give my two cents there as I, I guess a special guest. In addition, really to give you my thanks to everybody that's been involved in this work and to the commission for their continued support of exploring this concept.
Thank you. Go to Commissioner Light and Commissioner Mashieski.
Oh, I was just gonna say to Commissioner Robbie as the liaison for the youth commission. We, we have to really invite them into all portions of the, of the, of the county. Because I know that a lot of the youth commissioners are not familiar with what is going on. So inviting them and getting them acclimated and giving them the information to get them involved and to kind of so that they can give greater opinions would be great. But I know that in Y C S schools, there are tons of students that would love to participate in, in this, in this venture. So I'm open to, to advocating and to making sure that the youth commission is on board and able to help as needed. So please use me as you need.
Great. Go to Commissioner Mashieski.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for the update this evening. A question about resources and what you think the state of the actual resources are after somebody goes through assessment and they, they have you know, been identified as somebody that could benefit from that. What, what is the, the condition of, of that part of the cycle?
So it's a great question because I think one of the things is that the youth assessment center, you know, we think about the work directly with kids and families. It's really a systems change agent. And so when you get the right people around the table, you start to realize, well, we have all these services, but we don't have these. Here's the gaps in the services. And so part of the model actually helps us create those better services that are gonna meet the needs of kids. I will say we have a lot of community-based organizations in Washtenaw County, but are they best positioned to service these kids? I, I would say that we can build a great door and then we have to build the services behind that door. We did it in the adult system with Lead. You know, that was like a small doorway for adults. And we quickly realized that there were missing services to really help those people who, once they got to the door. I think the same thing is a question for us on the youth system. We do have a lot of youth providers who do great work. Now it's about connecting that young person to the right provider, but there are some pieces we think that are actually missing. That will need to be developed within community. A youth assessment center though helps us to do that in a targeted way. So that we really know this is what's missing in our community. Perfect example, we do a lot of crisis-oriented services. Someone's in crisis right now. What about the services that you need a family to walk with them a little bit longer? We don't have as many services like that. So I'm sure that will be one that we've talked about around our planning table that will probably show up once we get some young people connected to services. So there's still some work to be done on the service provision side of it.
Anyone else have questions at this time? Seeing some double some thumbs up signs, but other than that, no, no questions. Okay. Before you head out, Commissioner, or Administrator Dill did want to add one piece to the conversation.
Thank you, Chair. To the nine members a- around the dais, I, I want to say again, as, as you heard from Chair Labarre, thank you for your advocacy around this and, and your vision for lifting the program up. We will be back with you, to you all with a modest ask to make sure that this program work continued. So we will need the champions to, to get that across the finish line. So I would say to you all, expect that in, in, in the neck, in the coming weeks, we'll work through the, the chair of the board to make sure that you all have the information behind. But, but again, it's just a modest ask. And again, I want to thank you all for really having the, the, the forethought to, to really start this work several years ago. Thanks.
Thank you, gentlemen. Move now to our, our second discussion item. We have the recommended budget presentation. Catherine, I'm gonna turn it over to you. I'm gonna ask you the same question. Do you want to go through the presentation and save questions or you want us to ask them as they come?
I know. We can go as they come. There's a lot in here, so we will do it that way. It's like things are getting passed out now. So I'm gonna pass out to you all is the summary of the recommendations of the requests that are included in the recommended budget. But I'll be going through high-level things. So I'm gonna start out with the budget process. Most of this is all information we've been talking about all year, but just a quick reminder to set some context. Then going through the recommended budget and then the budget assumptions and those recommended adjustments is what's on the agenda for tonight. So just a reminder, back in the twenty-three affirmations, reaffirmation is when we started this move toward program-based budgeting. We have been making incremental steps each budget to get toward changing how we budget from that line I'm approached to the more narrative program look, so that we can talk better about how our public's resources are being used. This past year, we did the board priority retreat. I guess you all did the board priority retreat, which gave me some extra things to do like the resource management program inventory, but that's providing that big foundation of all of the work that's being done throughout county departments and offices. And then we did our second program-based budget request process. So we did one two years ago and this is the second iteration. We're learning things each time we do it as we go. Just a reminder, each year, the quadrennial budget cycle has a specific purpose. We are in year two, which is planning and vision. So trying to set things up. Really, we're working for, for that year for our next budget development to have a different look than how we have done them in the past. This is tiny slide, but we're on the roadmap. We started in twenty-three. We're all the way on the left and we've made it past halfway point. So again, we had the board priority retreat, the resource management program inventory. And then we also did the market salary study, which sets up compensation, et cetera, next year when we do the budget prep year. Next year, we'll be prepping for that full development that will be happening the following year. So getting to the recommended budget. So we're starting out. So we're starting out for the general fund. Sorry, tonight I'm focusing on the general fund. There's a lot in the budget, but just want to say everything you're seeing tonight primarily is general fund focused. We're starting at 166 million in 2026, growing to 176 million by 2029. And you see the different categories of revenue and then the service area groups on this summary. Looking by category for revenues, again, I feel like every time I show you all this chart, it's the same. Property taxes are where we get most of our revenue. It is where our resources grow. Fees and services, federal, state and local revenues currently relatively flat. The other revenue and reimbursement starts to grow in the later years and that's because of how we balance the quadrennial budget of contributing to fund balance in the early years of the budget, using fund balance in the later years of the budget. So you always see that offset when we have to use that budgetary tool. This is just looking by service area group. So again, most of the service areas are relatively small. General government is our general obligating or our general operating mileage. So again, that's where you see the growth. Everything else, even when you look at service area group, looks relatively flat. For expenditures, we primarily spend money on personal services, on staff time. That is the biggest source of our growth in costs for the county. Transfers out is larger in 2026. That's due to some recommended uses of fund balance for some different requests. But otherwise, we see those growing slightly as we support our non-general fund departments. Yeah. Reserves, you'll see being higher in 26 and 27. That's again contributing to fund balance so that we have it available in 28 and 29. So we are able to fund those years. Looking by service area group, public safety and justice, which are the courts, sheriff's office, prosecuting attorney are the largest component of our budget. But we do have significant investments in health and human services, support services, general government. They just look much smaller. I mean, a lot of that has to do with the staffing costs. Those are two of our, sorry, the courts and the sheriff's office have some of our largest staffs that are in the general fund. Any questions before I move on to what's in the recommendations, pretty straightforward and what we're expecting to see? Okay.
Hold on. Sorry, Catherine, we have a question for Commissioner Scott.
Can you just go back a slide?
Yes, this one.
And that public safety and justice slide?
Yes.
Do you think you can chunk that out for us? Because we said it's courts prosecutor and sheriff. Can you chunk that out for us about like what proportion of that is each one of those entities?
Yes, not on the fly. Yes. Future. Yes. I will get that by department for you all.
Thank you.
Yep. Okay. So in this budget, we had some big baseline assumptions. So the first one was making sure we maintained the reserves we built for implementing the market study that we did earlier. We have not yet done any negotiations with the unions. We wanted to make sure those resources that we had planned in previous budgets were still available. Some minimal savings for future compensation increases. Also making sure we have money for those non-general fund appropriations that by policy, we have to be able to fund with general fund money. So we're looking at a broader perspective whenever we're talking about compensation. We budgeted revenue sharing in alignment with the state budget, state liquor tax matching the announcements from earlier this year. Last year, you all set a policy that at least 50% of budget recommendations will go toward operational requests. The recommended budget is in alignment with that policy. And this year, no large changes to budget policy, so we don't have to go through all of the slides of cleaning all of that up. So one of the first ones I want to talk about is JQs. I believe it's job analysis questionnaire. It is the process for most of our employees to request their job description to be reviewed and be regraded by HR. When HR has reviewed them, if they agree that the position is graded too low and needs to be reclassified, the general fund is obligated to pick that up. This year, we have more JQs than I have seen in a long time. 219.5 FTEs reclassified. That cost is 800,000 in 2026 and it grows to over a million by 2029. It's a big impact on our resources. It's, I mean, it's good for the employees. We want them properly compensated. It's just, we are not used to having this many to do in a single year. There's a number from CMH's maintenance techs, maintenance techs, which are parks and facilities. The majority of these are ask me 2733 positions. There are a few non-union positions also recommended.
Heather, we've got a question here from Commissioner Robbie.
Sure.
Thank you, Catherine. So this is what's being proposed? So if we adopt the budget, then this goes through basically?
Yes, these are not the only position changes. This is the biggest part of the position grid, but it is a typical process of HR recommending that these employers are doing work at the grades that they are recommending that we budget those positions on.
Okay, that sounds good. I know that I've heard several times over the last few years about terminal health professionals feeling underpaid. This is, this is part of that, right?
Yeah.
So I know several of them did submit these as well.
Yes. And if a few submit, they do the whole job class. We don't ever do just a few.
Got it.
Yeah. Yep.
And so this could have been, like, folks could have submitted this even a while ago, right? This isn't like folks are just submitting this now?
I'm not an expert on this process.
No, that's okay. I think some of them submitted a while ago and this has been a long time coming, basically is my point. And I think this is really good that we're doing this.
Yep. Typically, they are submitted on an annual basis, but they can be resubmitted each year. Guillermo's here. He can answer the question.
Sorry, I was replacing some notes, but yes.
No, it's actually okay. I think, I think I'm.
Yeah.
Guillermo, Guillermo, Guillermo.
Is the both where employees can submit their JQs? So every April, all employees are eligible for this or they can submit their requests.
So I guess maybe some folks have submitted these several times and now it's becoming a thing, which is great. So thank you for your work on that.
Sure.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Good. Okay. So. Oh, he walked away. So for the past, I don't know how many budgets, probably most that I know of since we started coming out of the 08 recession, we have been assuming a one and a half percent growth on the general fund operating mileage. This year, we assumed the same thing to start out. It was part of the Q1 technical budget adjustments that you all voted on earlier this year. It was already incorporated into that quadrennial budget. Looking at the amount of needs and requests that came through in the process and reviewing our current CPI levels, that will be around 2.7%. It felt conservative to be able to bump that assumption up for 2026 to 3% and then go back to the one and a half percent increase. This meant that we could actually meet some of the requests where we were struggling to be able to come up with how we would do things. So it's a little bit of a change. Still, we feel comfortable. It's pretty conservative, but it does change the conversations around how we're used to getting more money in April of each year. If we got 5%, we had assumed one and a half percent, we'd be looking at a three and a half percent increase. And now we'll be looking at a 2%. So it's just going to change a little bit when we get that equalization report. But it felt important to really try to meet the needs of the organization as best as we could. That makes sense. And then attrition, we talked a lot about attrition this year. We'll continue talking about it. We adjusted attrition for the 2025 experience. We have seen less vacant positions this year. We reflecting when attrition wasn't achievable, we've been working through some different items. So we are, we ended up decreasing the overall amount of attrition that is in the budget. So decreasing it 1.1 million in '26, 2.6 million in smaller amounts in '28 and '29, the future years. Because of people rotating through positions, those are always larger numbers so that we're not overstating our costs. There are some conversations going on. I just wanted to be really clear about things that we haven't talked about tonight that is in the recommended budget. So the first one is marijuana revenue. We know the state is doing the changes. Our 2026 marijuana allocation is based on collections.
Catherine, forgive me.
Yes.
Sorry to interrupt, but when you say the changes, do you mean the recent tax change?
Sorry, 24% tax change. We know that we have seen some dispensaries closing. We're expecting there to be some kind of adjustment. We don't know the impact. We do know that the 2026 amount is based on collections through 93025. So that tax won't have impacted next year's revenue. We know that dispensaries are, the money is distributed proportionately and dispensaries have been closing throughout the state. So just hard to know what ours will look like. We will know early next year what that is. So that's one that we're expecting to probably come in short. We're just not sure where it's at. On the opposite side, SIO Township has dissolved their DDA, which will increase our collections. Will increase our collections for property taxes on which we will best calculate. When we get the next equalization report, it should be above 500,000, taking a conservative approach. It's another thing that makes that 3% property tax change a little more palatable to absorb because we're expecting this offset. The last one, when we were originally looking at the budget, we started talking about, do we try to budget interest earnings? We've had significant years of interest earnings well above the budget. We know that it trends very closely to the Fed. We know that we can try to project it. However, with how tight these funding, these resources have been, it felt important to keep one potential source of non-structural revenue to come in for whatever non-structural need we have coming up next year. We don't want to take away every possible tool we have and be so hamstring that we can't respond flexibly to anything that's happening this year. Animal control, everyone's favorite topic. So this is one of the ones that when we were looking for, through resource management, the levels of mandate are different than we had previously expected. So it's one that has the opportunity to be reviewed. We know there's a community expectation. They're used to having the humane society operating in the way that it does. For this budget, the city of Ann Arbor has agreed to increase their local revenue to pay their fair share. That is the amounts that you see. We are increasing the revenue for local animal control. We are increasing the budgeted allocation only in the amount of the local animal control revenue increase, which means we are still intentionally under budgeting the humane society contract starting at half a million dollars in '26, growing to 750,000 in '29. This is assuming we're paying the current full cost of the contract and that future cost, once that contract expires, would continue to grow at the same rate. That's not set in stone, just the assumptions that are, that the budget is based on. I have a question.
Got it. Question for Commissioner Robbie.
Surprisingly, I do. So just to clarify once again, because I ask this every time, but so it's $2 million a year for the four years, right, for your contract? And we are on the hook for the $2 million, but if a community pays their fair share, that comes out of our $2 million obligation?
Yes.
Basically correct? Okay, so this is being reflected as a, like a positive revenue stream against that line item?
Yes, but we are basically only projecting to receive, it's less than 15% of the total cost that we're getting from local units. I think it's closer to 10, but I thought I had the number in doubt. Okay, Andrew's nodding, so I'm in the right ballpark of the 10%.
The amount that we had hoped, that we had, I know initially when we passed this, there was an amount that you guys had sort of anticipated that we would have to cover either way and an amount that you had hoped to recuperate from providing services for local communities. So how close to that number are we?
Commissioner, the number you see up there is what we've been able to secure to date. We're actively pursuing discussions with all the local units inside of the, inside of the county though, and hope to be able to report more than that in the future, but that's what's been secured to date.
That's what's been secured, but I guess I'm wondering how close to our goal are we? I'm pretty sure we had set a goal for ourselves in your report that you had.
Yeah, I can't recall that figure off the top of my head, but can get it.
I mean, just, just to add, the city of Ann Arbor was the first conversation that we had and it yielded some results. We'll continue to work through those conversations moving forward and then we'll bring you guys an update at some point. I too don't recall the numbers off the top of my head, but you know, again, we established a goal of trying to close that gap significantly and we're working through all of that. Commissioner Somerville.
Yeah, thanks. I think this one is, is a little complicated because the board had never like really approved an official like directive for admin. And so some of the information that I've kind of gotten in the middle of some of the conversations that have started is related to like amounts and asks. And I guess it's unclear under state law if locals are required to pay anything. And I think based on conversations that we've had in this room and complicated votes on continuing the agreement that we have with the humane society are wrapped up in this philosophy that we're going to, you know, have a contract with an organization that has a mission. And so I guess perhaps what makes more sense is for the board to come up with some sort of like clear direction for admin because I've looked back and I can't find anything where we actually formally voted on something to give you all clear direction. And like, for example, one of my municipalities who is currently not paying anything, like 10 years ago, the amount they were paying was like 10,000. We're asking them now to pay like 80. And I guess it was just like not something we, you know, and it's not our job to negotiate with locals, but it's also unclear in state law who the responsible party is. And I think we've had this conversation before. And when we voted on this previously, it was also clear amongst the nine of us that there is a philosophical difference among some of us on the mission of here in Valley versus what our minimum requirement to provide for animal control is. And so I don't want that to get lost because at the end of the day, I don't think we can really force the locals to do anything. I could be wrong, but I've researched this a little bit. And I also think just one of the things I've been trying to bring more into this space in here is like, we need to be very clear and there should be like a board-approved directive passed by the commissioners. That way you aren't wasting time because right now I'm kind of confused on how some of this is happening and I don't know if others have the same thoughts.
A few hands pop up there. Go to Administrator Dill.
To Commissioner Somerville, let me, let me say very clearly that this is just an ask. It's a continued conversation with our community partners about cost sharing around this item. There is no direct pressure placed on any of our municipalities around this. This is the beginning of a conversation. And as you all know around this dais, what we talked about initially was trying to close the gap between what the county is currently subsidizing. We are going to continue to do that work with no real goal or pressure on municipalities for payment.
Just to follow up on that, I guess the thing, because like I looked at a couple of meetings ago where there was a back and forth, you were at the podium and someone asked if there needed to be something approved and you said no. I mean, honestly, like I'm a little uncomfortable with that because like maybe the right way to do this is to try to like encourage people to participate with like a ramped up approach with like a percentage. I don't know. I don't think it's good for us to, like sometimes we say that we have to pass some, an official directive on things and sometimes we don't. Right now, there has been no official directive and I'm a little uncomfortable with that. And I think perhaps there should be like, like it'd be cool if the admin team came back with a couple of options of how to approach this and. like it'd be cool if the admin team came back with a couple of options of how to approach this and potential amounts that we're making in, in of the asks. I don't know. I'm just one commissioner, but I would be most comfortable if we actually approved a formal directive for you all because otherwise, like I just feel like you all don't really know what we want if the majority of the board hasn't agreed to what we want.
Certainly fair, Commissioner. I, I will just say from my seat, I'd like for there not to be a subsidy. And I know that might not be realistic. Certainly we'll follow the, the guidance and direction from this board. If you all want to modify or pivot from the current framework. But I will say clearly, the current framework is to make certain that our municipalities are operating with the very best information. So what my conversations have been steeped in, here are the costs. And here are the costs aligned with the animals that are being picked up in your jurisdiction. So we're sharing information at this point and, and I'll be very candid. I have asked those municipalities that I've spoken to for a cost sharing arrange, arrangement that closes the subsidy. Whether I'll be successful or not, it remains to be seen, but certainly would, would welcome some further or a different direction from the Board of Commissioners.
Can I respond to that? Sorry.
Sure.
I guess I appreciate that. I guess where I'm confused is that we haven't really told you. And I feel like maybe it puts you all in a position where you're just trying to guess. And maybe a good thing to do would have like three, like, like option A, B, and C. Like, are we trying to close the gap fifty percent? Like I've seen the proposal, like when I emailed you all about it, I've seen some projections, or are we trying to close the gap? Twenty percent, like what's an actual realistic number to get locals to voluntarily participate? Because I don't think they're required to participate under state law. And so if we're trying to get people to, to pay into a philosophy around the mission of what here on valley does, I think we may need to approach it a little differently. And I guess I think it would be cool if the nine of us gave you all a little bit more direction around that, because right now it doesn't seem like we actually have.
Fair enough. I am operating from the perspective that if we don't ask, the framework will continue. And I'll, I'll just say, and, and then be quiet and listen to the board. I don't know that the current model and funding framework is sustainable moving forward. And either we're going to, as an organization, lean into the mission of the Humane Society and fund it appropriately, or we're going to pivot in and have deeper conversations with our community partners around the, the funding partnership.
So we've got three commissioners in the queue, Commissioner Hodge, then Light, then Robbie. I suspect these are related. I'll add Commissioner Sanders, Commissioner Hodge.
Thank you very much. So we keep talking about what is required and Michelle, I think you've given us an opinion and we're going to you now. I think you've given us an opinion at some point over the years about this. I don't know if it would be helpful for you to resurface the opinion or if you need to give us a new opinion or if you have an opinion in your mind right now that you'd like to share.
I'd like to circulate an opinion before we have a public discussion on it.
I, I thought that was going to be the response, so please circulate an opinion.
Okay, we'll do.
Appreciate it.
Go to Commissioner Light.
So I do not think that there has really been any, well, for me, there's no confusion. My ask was that we need to cut the contract for here on valley. Let's start there. That's one. What are we at? What, like one point something? What, what, what is our ticket with them?
Two million though.
What?
Two million.
Oh, no. We smoking crack. No, no. So first of all, we start there. We need to cut the contract. If our, the next thing is if the municipalities are collecting any kind of fees or taxes from the residents, then they can either, A, they should participate in paying because if you're receiving money to pay for it, if that's what you're collecting it for, then it comes. But right now, the only thing that we need to do is we need to quit letting here on valley dog walkers with two, two million? And then you don't even want to come and tell us how much it costs to, to hold the, the animals per day? Like, let's be serious. There's nothing confusing about that. And it's not the municipalities I think that we need to be trying to figure out and making them pay because it's, we're giving all the money to here on valley. For what? Let the little dogs and cats run around. So what? What is it gonna do? You better tell your kids, look, just chew them off. You'll be all right. But we will not continue to keep paying all of this money. And I think I've said that from day one, when I raised my hand and then afterwards, I didn't even get to go and take pictures and do kumbaya with everybody because I was back in the office talking about how here on valley is about to dog walkers with this contract of them wanting one point, whatever million it was. So let's cut the crap and quit acting like we don't know what's going on. This is the problem. We're giving them too much money. So my ask has been to cut the contract. That's been from day one. So let's quit pretending like we don't know what's going on. And I will keep saying it until we renegotiate the contract. Look at our economy right now. We're on shutdown. Why is this even a conversation? Everybody getting cut off. For watching all that is, we are not going to continue to keep wasting money. So this is no respect of organization. Quit playing with the money. Y'all know we gotta start making some cuts around here.
Commissioner Robbie?
I just went to the church of Crystal Light. And I agree a hundred percent with everything you said and have also been saying that. And I think, I do just want to say though, in regards to this, so you know, as I've been saying, as we've discussed, the county is responsible for three things. The Dog Law nineteen nineteen, we're responsible for animals that are abused and animals that are court involved. Those are our three responsibilities. And we, the two million dollars that we pay pays for well above and beyond that, including enforcement of local animal ordinances. Local communities choose to have local ordinances that go above and beyond the county's responsibility. That two million dollars pays for the animal control services in the communities that have their own ordinances. On top of that, many of these same communities collect dog tag license revenue. We collect dog tag license revenue for some of the county and not all of the county. So there is revenue, as Commissioner Light said, that is coming into different communities for the assumed purpose of helping to enforce their animal control ordinances. So if the county is paying to enforce an animal control ordinance that is not ours, it is not our responsibility to do that. And it is the city's responsibility to enforce their own ordinance to the degree that they want it enforced. It's not our responsibility. So is there a state law that says we, that they have to pay? No. But is there a state law that says we have to pay to enforce their ordinance? Absolutely not. And so we are currently overpaying for a contract that we do not need to be paying two million dollars for. The only reason we're paying it is because we're providing a service to the local communities and some of them are paying us for their fair share. All that having been said, I agree with Commissioner Somerville that we should have some type of policy that sets the rates that basically we want to charge to the local community. I think we should set the rate here at this table and say, we are going to charge back to the local communities based on a variety of factors. I think we should charge based on, do you have an animal control ordinance? How complicated is your animal control ordinance? Does it involve parakeets? And lizards all the way to cats and dogs? Or is it just simply cats and dogs? Like, and, and then that lead, leads into the conversation of like, what does it cost to then enforce that ordinance in your community? That's what you should be paying to the county to help enforce that ordinance, which gets back to the original whole thing that I have been saying for the last fifteen years, which is really what this comes down to is understanding what the cost breakdown is for the services that are being provided. And when we get the cost breakdown, how much does it cost per day to house a dog? How much does it cost per day to house a cat, parakeet, a lizard? Once we know that, we can work back from that to build, this is what the county is required to pay. This is what we are paying to help support local communities. This is what local communities are paying us to help support them under our contract. So I agree with Commissioner Somerville and Commissioner Light, and I do think that some type of proposal should come back to us on basically setting what you all are going to then go to the communities and, and ask for, and that you have the weight of this BOC behind you to say, our Board of Commissioners said, this is what we're expecting out of your community because you have X, Y, and Z ordinance that, you know, so that's my two cents. Thank you to both of you for your comments so far.
I, I'd add mine that I, I take a vastly different position on the policy question related to the value of the contract, but I fully agree. If this board has a directive, if we pass a resolution, it gives the administrator and their team sort of direct intent of this body and is probably the best negotiating tool we can, we can provide them. My only caution would be, I, I, I think we could have several working sessions on the, the politics and policy of animal control. And I don't know if we're at that position right now personally. Commissioner Sanders, then Commissioner Beaman.
I just wanted to add that I do remember specifically at one of our board meetings at the beginning of the year, asking Administrator Dale to have conversations, although it may not have been a, a board vote. I specifically asked, I don't even know if it was asked or demanded, that he have conversations with the municipalities, especially those that are assessing their residents for animal controls and not turning over money to us. So I just wanted to correct that part. It, it may not have been a, a board sanctioned request, but he did receive a request from me at an official board meeting to have those conversations. And I believe some months later, it came up again because I wanted to, I wanted an update on whether or not those discussions had started. So just want to be clear on that.
Commissioner Beaman.
Thank you, Chair. I just want to layer on so that it's in everyone's thoughts. When we're talking about animal control, that also extends to agricultural animals that extends to our farmers. So please take that into consideration when we're thinking about these things as I like to be fed. Our farmers need our support, given everything that's happening right now. So if we're reviewing ordinances, let's take a look at what is animal and what is agriculture.
Andrew.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Just to the budget question that was asked earlier. When this came to the board for the current contract, that was in November of twenty twenty-three, at that time, there was no budget adjustment that accompanied this. But the cost increased significantly, about five hundred thousand dollars a year. So that, that bottom line that you are seeing on the slide up there, that is the distance that we are from our goal in terms of covering the cost increase that came with that new contract.
And thank you. To be clear, we do have updated data and metrics around the animals, where, what jurisdictions they're coming from and what their impacts are on those costs. So we can reformat that information and get it back to you, but we always welcome more direct guidance from the board on these kinds of items. So if we can generate a, a recommendation from you all, a direction from you all that isn't vague, we will, we will follow that to, to the T. Again, this is about closing the, the, the funding gap i- in, in this program. And I, I thought I heard clearly from this body that that was one of the priorities of the body. So again, for me, more clarity is, is very, very helpful.
Good. Another question from Commissioner Robbie.
Just a quick clarity on the question that, or the, what Greg just said. Do you have information, you said you have data, you have data on the animals from each jurisdiction going to the Humane Society, or do you have data on
That's correct.
of actually providing services at the Humane Society?
Both, please go ahead. Well, we have both.
Yeah, and, and happy to do more here. And, and when we made additional requests for data that we don't have on hand, we, we have contractual language that gets that for us. But our standard report includes on a monthly basis on the animal, the source jurisdiction, the reason it was picked up as well as who brought it in. In terms of the cost, we do that on an annual basis. There's been a lot of discussion about this and don't want to go into details tonight, but the methodology right now is where HSHV apportions part of their cost of running the whole of the shelter to the county, and that's based on the number of animals that are taken in as well as the length of time that those animals stay at the shelter.
Yeah, that's, and that's not what I'm looking for at all. I mean, I, I would like, you know. So just to be clear, they have still not provided detailed information about the actual cost per animal that it takes to act. So what I'm trying to figure out is like the mandate that we have under state law, what is the cost of that? They don't want to give us that information because they want to allocate it as a percentage of their total budget. So we still don't have that. I just wanted to clarify that that was not data that was given to us that I haven't seen.
Yeah, and we can back into that information based on the data. I think what HSHV would describe as doing is that they're, the way they do their business is the care of animals when they are in the door. And that they are not willing to change the way they do business to do services on behalf of the county.
So Commissioner Robbie, anything else? I skipped over Commissioner Somerville, forgive me, and then we'll go to Commissioner Light, then Scott.
Thanks. I just wanted to respond to the follow-up after my, I want to be clear. Like I know that we can't continue to just pay for animal control. I think the challenge when we don't pass a board approved directive is, is when a couple of commissioners Ash, Administrator Dylan staff to do something that triggers an action that touches parts of our district and we're unaware of like some of the conversations or the level of the ask. And it's not that I don't agree that we should be asking locals to pay. But it's when like, there's like this assumption that the board gave a directive that we didn't like, because that happened to me. And it, it was not pleasant. And when I was backtracking like how this could have maybe went differently, I was like, if we would have just passed a, an approved directive, I could have pointed to the resolution, the considerations we made when we directed the administrative team to make these asks of the locals, but because we didn't do that, there was really no like rhyme or reason for the direction that we were going that, that I could say, yeah, I agreed with that because I didn't, I did nothing at this table to make that, like trigger that event occurring. And I would just be more comfortable if we maybe, it sounds like we're going to need a working session for this because it's seven o'clock and we still have more of this presentation, but I just want to be realistic in, in my, like to all of you that I am fully aware that like we can't keep just paying for everything. But I think that there are probably ways that we could be better at working directly with admin to give them the tools that they need to navigate this in a way that will lead to long-term success. Thank you.
Commissioner Light.
Totally in agreeance. And as I was saying, I don't believe that it's about the municipalities. I don't think that's where we have shortfalls and gaps. I believe it is with, you said you all have received, if you have the data and if, is it two million dollars worth? That's what I want to know. We keep on beating around the bush. Commissioner Robbie has asked on several occasions and we still have not gotten the answer because HSHV has told us that they do not have to tell us that, that that's not how they operate. So since they don't operate like that, then they don't need to operate under the funding that they get from us. So my ask, request and demand is that they provide us with the information that we've asked for. Or you don't get the money. You want the money? Give us our ask. Period. And the next time that they get funding, it won't be two million. I can put that on everything.
Commissioner Scott.
My, my comments have to do with the actual contract itself, less about the budget. So I'll hold them till we have that conversation about the contract. Thanks.
Catherine, back to you.
Before you go, Chair, if you don't mind, I'd, I'd be remiss if I didn't share with this body. My conversations to date have been only about delivering the updated information and the methodology associated with that information. Here are the costs that we have identified are a direct result of animals being picked up in your jurisdiction. There was no aggressive behavior on my part in terms of you must fund X, Y, and Z. It was merely outline, outlining the costs associated with those communities. So I, I wanted to make that clear to the.
We have a quick comment from Commissioner Robbie.
Want to thank the administrator for your work and Andrew and the city of Ann Arbor for actually putting some money into this. Thank you.
Catherine, please.
Great. Next slide. So hopefully this one will be less, less discussion. So when we're looking at adjustments to include, the first place we start are ones that are neutral to the general fund, meaning they do not need general fund resources to be able to fund. There are a number of positions that are on that position grid that do not have a general fund impact. The first is creating a one point O F T building official administrator. This is to support the building officials team on. This is to support the building officials team, um, and getting our response to permit time down. It's all covered entirely by existing fees. Um, so that one's pretty straightforward. Um, IT, um, earlier this year asked to borrow two positions to create two additional help desk supports to stabilize the help desk, make sure, um, that we have people to answer the phones when people call and have issues. That was funded by reallocating portions of their operating budget, um, so did not have an impact on the, uh, general fund. Materials Management is creating a 0.68 hazardous waste technician. That is the exact FTE that they could afford with the revenue they had. That is why that number is wonky. Um, and this is a part-time regular position, so they'll be receiving benefits. Um, and, but it is funded entirely by expected contributions and a little bit of fund balance. They have a healthy fund balance to weather any storms that the contributions won't cover. Parks is upgrading a point eight FTE to 1.0, the Park Naturalist, it's 2733A position, and then also creating an additional natural areas stewardship technician. That's all covered by existing Parks Milage funding. Um, and then lastly, reclassifying, um, a 0.8 Senior Treasury Accountant to 1.0. This is covered by interest earnings within the Treasurer's Office. Is also expected to reduce overtime and, um, part-time temp budgets. There should be savings to cover it. Um, this point two FTE, the person's being paid overtime. They're already doing 1.0 hours of work. So we're just getting the position control cleaned up to match, um, that, but with no net in, impact on the general fund. Uh, there's two other net neutral budget adjustments. Oh, it's really tiny when I look at it from here. Um, Materials Management, um, similar to that, um, FTEs for the hazardous, the hazardous waste technician, um, is doing an increased operating budget based on their expected contributions. Um, and then fleet telematics, this is devices that help our fleet, um, be better managed, understanding driver behavior, um, getting better data on mileage, et cetera. Right now, a lot is self-reported. Um, this will be funded entirely by fleet fund balance. They have received a significant amount of interest earnings, about 600,000 in the past two to three years. Um, and this is less than half of that. Um, so the plan is to fund it with fund balance. As it's operationalized, we should be seeing cost savings elsewhere, um, that will play out through the general fund budget, um, since the majority of vehicles are in the general fund. So with all of that, before we get to actually funding any budget requests, um, we, negative numbers mean we have money available, positive number means it's using fund balance. When we're talking about budget requests, um, we average four years to just, so it doesn't play out perfectly each four years, but to just look at our overall, um, available resources. So with the assumptions we've built in so far, we have about $2.6 million to allocate, um, which, uh, more than half of that is because we changed that, um, general fund upgrading mileage assumption. That gave us one and a half million dollars. Uh, so that's where we started. Um, I want to talk non-structural recommendations first. At the last working session, we talked a lot about the elevator maintenance request, um, state code requirement um, to update all of our elevators. If we do not, um, do this, then we cannot operate the elevator, um, which then means stairs only, and then we have an issue with accessibility to our buildings. So it's pretty essential that we, um, do this. This is an up to. So if there is an ability to reduce costs, then the other money will remain in the general fund. But we will, um, reimburse facilities as they spend or these upgrades for the elevators. Um, the second one is another public safety critical item. The jail courthouse fire alarm is well out of code. It is unsupported. They cannot get parts for it. Um, so huge public safety issue, um, if anything were to happen. So that's up to 500,000 to fix that system, um, make sure that we have, um, both our staff, our inmates, et cetera, the public who are at the jail or the courthouse are all safe in the event of an emergency. Um, the last one is an additional BOC priority allocation. Uh, 2026 is the county's bicentennial. We have a working group committee. They are working on planning events. Um, this is again an up to allocation, but making sure we have funding available, um, to do that. Our recommendation is to fund this whole $3 million out of fund balance. Um, I have a later slide that will show the impact of that on fund balance, but we are well above our fund balance targets. Um, so it's comfortable to put, um, our current fund balance toward these items. Okay. Um, going into structural increases, um, we started out looking at small contractual increases. Um, again, I, to set the context, when we ran the budget request process, we received 9.55 million dollars of just operational requests, let alone program modifications and then new programs. Um, so we aren't even close to being able to find all of the operational needs of the organization. Um, this budget is heavily focused on, on those, um, just trying to keep pace with inflation, et cetera. So a lot of these are contracts that we have, essential services, relatively small dollar amounts, making sure we're properly funding, um, things. So hardware, software maintenance, that is within IT, is making sure we have enough money for our Microsoft contract, our network support, um, all the software we use, our ERP system, which I'm partial to. Um, you see a larger increase in 2028 because in last year's budget, we missed increasing the amount, um, which we, every year we try to increase, you usually see a bigger increase in the last year. Um, so that's why you see that. And then that makes 2029 more expensive. This is just current hardware, software maintenance contracts. This is the cost they're expected to grow. Um, the industry is moving to software as a service, which is more expensive, and we are often still. Um, salary market study and the employee engagement study are in similar positions for HR. They are regular recurring things that we have committed to do. Um, salary market study every three to four years per labor agreement, so budgeting for the next one to take place in 2028. Um, and then the employee engagement survey, last year, we budgeted $30,000 annually to execute the surgery, the sur- surgery, the survey, make sure we can do it. Every three, three years, we have to reprogram, which is an extra 15,000. So HR made us aware. So we're going to make sure every three years, we have the money, um, to be able to update that survey, um, and get employee feedback. So this is a total, again, goes from 115,000 grows to 515,000, but that's primarily in hardware, software maintenance. Okay. Um, the next one, we looked at internal operational requests. Um, this again came a lot out of the conversations that we had at the last working session where we were discussing lawn, snow, and janitorial services. Um, they requested, facilities requested 500,000. This is a recommendation of partial funding, attempting to keep up with inflation, but I'm hoping facilities can find ways to keep figuring out, to keep costs down. Um, looking on the IT side, there's significant investments in cybersecurity that we have not done, um, that make us potentially at risk of some very bad actors. So this is looking at making sure we can, um, shore up that cybersecurity side of things so that we're not in a bad situation in the future. Um, the next one is the contract system. Both Corp Counsel and Finance requested an update to our OnBase system. Um, anybody who has interacted with OnBase for contracts will know the struggle. Um, this request is.
Catherine, I'm a nine. You know, I'll show you have a question from Commissioner Scott.
Thank you, Chair. Cybersecurity.
Mm-hmm.
Um, does any of this, do any of these funds go towards creating the .gov?
I don't believe so. Um, the biggest.
Commissioner Beaman is telling me that's Big Bucks next to me, and I'm like, this is Big Bucks.
Yes. Um, the primary, the first thing it would go to, I'm trying to find the page to tell you a little to look at.
Oh, in my packet?
In your packet. Page 22 is the Security Operations Center. That is the, their priority request of cybersecurity funding. Um, so it's cybersecurity monitoring. It's all trying to avoid a threat. Um, and then there are two other cybersecurity requests of annual penetration testing and the security information and event management solution. We do not have full funding for both of those, so we'd be looking to IT to prioritize between them. We can ask the .gov question.
Uh, yeah, I'd be just interested in, in hearing a little bit more about the .gov question because I think there's, there are some protections that come with having a .gov domain that I wonder how they cross over with some of these requests.
Terry's here, but wh- while he makes his way up. While he makes his way up.
Well, I did not see him.
Chair, I, I do want to say, we own the .gov domain currently. Uh, but the build-out requires additional resources, so I will let Terry speak to those. I know he's excited about it. That is.
Hi, Terry.
Commissioner, we, we did check on that, you know, when you inquired about that last year.
Yeah.
And without getting too technical, the way our network is set up, everything is crafted around the washna.org and ewashna.org domain. So meaning all of our servers, email, um, all of our software is all tied to that .org address. It can be changed, but it would, you know, require significant investment in time and effort. And, um, I just sent off a proposal for that, um, uh, to a committee to review. But it was in excess of, uh, half a million dollars.
Okay. It was an act, no, I'm, I'm like, I'm, no, I'm saying, okay, because I'm thinking I'm in excess of half a million dollars for cybersecurity. I'm, so how does the dot, how does the .gov domain protect us from different things that the org doesn't?
Sure. Um, .gov domain is a little more exclusive for you to get. You have to prove that you're able to get it. I don't necessarily think it provides any more protection for cybersecurity.
Okay.
People can still get in, you know, by, um, spoofing somebody's address or, you know, getting their login information. There's a million different ways to get in. So I think the two are kind of exclusive from each other.
Okay. Great. Thanks, Terry.
Sure. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Sure.
Great. Team effort here. I like it.
I love it. Thank you.
Um, okay, so contract system, going off of that, uh, so it's a cumbersome system. Um, the total request is significantly more, um, than what is reflected here. This is the net cost of the general fund. Um, there is an old internal service fund called Employee Purchase. Computer purchase is from back in the day when employees could buy laptops and computers from IT. Um, the funds have been sitting dormant for mu- many years. So we're recommending using 170,000 to get the system up and running. Um, and then there's $40,000 allocated to finance that, um, Tina has agreed to give up in order to have, um, a better system for both Corp Counsel and purchasing. Um, it is critical because this is one where making sure we have proper eyes reviewing contracts, making sure things have been appropriately pushed through the board, that they have been budgeted, um, is all been very convoluted in the current system, knowing where it's at in the process, being responsive to departments. So definitely looking to improve that system. I know sometimes we get questions about contracts and we have a hard time answering them. It's, it takes a lot of time to get there. So looking to improve that whole process. Um, and then the last one is a small operating budget for the Resiliency Office. When we established their operating budget, we did not give them a budget for telephones, and so they requested one for $1,350. So those are kind of the internal operational requests that we are recommending for funding, right? Any questions? Okay. Um, Sheriff Budget, um, they put in a few requests. We are recommending that we fund the jail food and medical request that they put in. It starts at 1.6 million, grows to $2 million in 2029. Um, food, oh gosh, I'm going to get this wrong. Medical is out for bid this year. Um, and we're in the process, I believe, of collecting responses. Um, we're not expecting that there'll be savings, but we will know what the market is telling us of how much it costs. Food is going to go out for RFP next year, but again, following the industry trends, not expecting there to be savings. Um, the good news is when the state passed their budget, they did allocate $363,000, um, toward Washtenaw County um, in form of revenue sharing that has to be dedicated to public safety. So we are directly, um, applying that to this jail food medical ask to reduce the net impact on the general fund, but it is a big chunk of that. Also, this was the highest ranked, highest scoring budget request in the process.
Commissioner Scott?
Thanks. Um, I, they think this is an area where a lot of attention was brought to this budget last year as part of the political process that made me start thinking about the sheriff budget even more in more detail. Um, and so I know that it seems like I'm harping on this, but I heard a lot from the current sheriff when she was running that the sheriff's budget was too big. She has said since then that she didn't know then what she knows now. However, I am wondering if there have been any cuts that the sheriff's office has suggested, noting that she very much said that this budget was too big, and instead I'm looking at the same budget plus. I am not at all saying that I do not think that jail food and medical should be funded. One, 100%, we need to take care of people. But I also want to note that I was told this budget was too big by the sheriff when she was running. And now I want to know why I'm, I'm giving an even bigger budget with no cuts in it.
We can, uh, we can, we can get, um, get back to you. I know costs, oftentimes cost containment efforts do not reflect in terms of like places where they are over budget previously, don't show up in this kind of budget, but we can definitely get that or make the request of it for that information of what those efforts have looked like.
Thanks. Um, additionally, um, I think that I have asked, um, and I'll just say it as a public ask too. I'm looking for the delta between what's my required in the mandated services and what's requested.
You want, sorry, say that one more time?
What's the difference between what's the required mandated services that the sheriff provides and what's requested?
Okay. Thank you.
Going to go to Commissioner Robbie?
Uh, yeah, looking, looking forward to what, the information that you get back from the sheriff's office. I do know that there were, uh, significant cuts that were made in the sheriff's office to the tune of hundreds of thousands of dollars. I don't know the final number. I believe it was an even number on the high end, like six or 800,000. Uh, I think it was 800,000, um, but obviously get those numbers back from them. And I don't remember where I saw it now. I think it might have even been in one of your presentations previously, talking about, um, some cuts that they had made structurally. So, uh, the number that's in my head is $800,000 in reductions that they've already made.
Commissioner Scott?
Thank you. Additionally, I, and I will say, and, and I'll reflect this, um, also for, for next year. I think it's probably too much for this year, but, uh, we receive pretty detailed budget requests from two of our other fairly large departments in CMH and, um, Public Health. They give us a, a really nice overview and we're able to, oh, look at their entire budgets. And so when I approve those budgets at this board table, I have a really good idea of what I'm approving in terms of funding and not. That's the type of presentation I would like to see from the sheriff's office as well. Um, the budget, as I'm approving it for the sheriff's budget now, is very opaque to me, nor do I feel like I'm getting the detail I need to approve the largest share of our budget going forward. Thank you.
Go to, uh, Commissioner Sanders.
We're asking a whole lot of you guys. I'm so, so sorry. Um, I am curious to know, um, what, if any, costs to the county there have been, uh, related to any, uh, terminations, wrongful terminations, any pending or settled lawsuits? What has been our cost, um, for this current administration? I'm also interested in knowing for the administrative staff of this, um, administration, have there been increases in the salaries for those staff compared to the previous administration? And if so, what are they? And, uh, are the number of administrative staff the same or have they increased? I'm really interested in the, uh, the status of, uh, any faux pas is related to, uh, hiring, firing, promotions, and what has been the cost to the county? Because ultimately, we have to pay to settle any, any lawsuits. And I'd like to know if there are any pending, um, or settled, and what is that dollar figure? I also um, want to reiterate that I have asked, I think this will be now the third or fourth time that I've asked for some demonstration from the sheriff's department regarding what they have done to try and mitigate the, the increase in the cost for food and medical. So if they tried to renegotiate, if they put out an RFP, I don't seem to be able to get an answer on that.
That is where the medical's out for RFP, foods due to be RFP'd next year. So we will have those.
Oh, one more thing.
Yes.
I'd like to know what is the um, current um, expended travel amount for the sheriff's department for conferences? And yeah, I'd like to know what that is to date.
Okay. Thank you.
Good. Go to Commissioner Robbie.
Uh, thank you, Chair. I do know that uh, some of the budget reductions that were realized by the sheriff's office were realized through reductions in the number of executive level staff that she had in terms of her political appointees compared to what previous administration said there were less. And so I, that was some of where the savings came from is my understanding. Um, and we in fact voted on a resolution related to that as well. Um, so just wanted to put that out there. And if we get um, data on what Commissioner Sanders was asking, if we could um, get it over a period of time, maybe say five years to compare it, um, how it, if it's a base, what the baseline is versus the current cost, I think that would be helpful in comparing and contrasting as well.
Catherine, going back to you.
Uh, the last set of the recommendations. Um, so there's two key civic infrastructure positions. This is kind of like doing what county government needs to be doing. Um, the first is for equalizations, removing a one point O FT property description and equalization analyst. This um, is a role that had was, has been filled for many years by a part-time temp who had retired in twenty twelve. Uh, he finally stepped away in twenty twenty four. This is giving equalization, the staffing back to be, to make sure we are properly assessing our property values, which is essential so that we get the right amount of property tax revenue. We can fund things. Um, so this is returning to previous staffing levels. It's part of um, when everything was under contracts and part-time temps, it's the last step to get them back to the level that they were at previously. Um, this is partially offset by a sixty thousand dollar reduction in their part-time temp budget. So it is um, a uh, the net cost is what's shown here. It is a more expensive position, but they um, are reducing their budget. Nearly fifty percent of it is coming by reducing their part-time temp. Uh, the second one is a big ask. We've been hearing all year from the clerk's office um, about the need for elections coordinators, given that elections are now year-round activities. There's a lot more security, there's programming, early voting, there's a lot of stuff that needs to be done on an annual basis. Um, they requested two positions. We did not have resources for both. We are recommending um, one position be created. Um, they were able to reallocate staff um, somewhat uh, to the CPA, their concealed pistol license fund. Um, so that gave us a little bit of savings, um, but the rest is an ask out of the general fund. So, oh, and then the last one. Um, so we know winter sheltering is a big conversation that we always um, have, that we have not yet really been able to figure out how to identify structurally. Um, how to get that funding in uh, twenty twenty five, I believe it was one point three million that was allocated. Um, this is at least getting a starting funding um, and hope, in the hopes that we can identify the additional funding um, to get up to what would be needed each year, but making sure we at least have that baseline ready to go. Um, we're recommending to fund it out of the contribution of fund balance. So twenty twenty five, we are planning to contribute seven and a half million dollars to fund balance for future costs.
Catherine, forgive me. We're going to go to Commissioner Somerville.
Yep.
Sorry, I just wanted to chime in on this slide, just to point out both for like winter sheltering and like in the future, trying to figure out how we can better um, fund eviction prevention and like work towards identifying some of the cases in which we see like repeat situations where somebody might be like getting evicted in January, but then again in like October and you can only like access eviction prevention like once a year. And every month on the first, we run out of eviction prevention dollars that day. And so just to plug in for like long-term thinking, like I know we can't just grow money on a tree, but if we could, I would love to see like a line in our budget specifically for expanding eviction prevention. And um, seeing an increase every year, a percentage increase for winter sheltering because the cost goes up to provide the service. Um, every year, just like cost for everything else goes up. And so anyways, I just wanted to plug that in here. Um, with the hopes that in the future, we'll just have extra money to allocate to those line items. Thank you. Oh, and I guess one other plug. I'm excited. Once we do hire a director of the Commission on Aging to work in how we're going to utilize the millage to prevent senior homelessness and how that will kind of change the way all of this works out. Like we will be able to insert more funding to hit that population of folks above the age of sixteen. It'll make a difference for folks fifty-nine and under. So thanks.
Okay. Uh, I'll let's talk a little about the contribution of fund balance. On the next slide, it will make more sense. So um, and a couple of different slides, we've talked about using fund balance. I just wanted to show what the fund balance is going to look like in this recommended budget. So um, winter sheltering allocation of a million dollars per year over the quadrennial budget. Um, the non-structural request, we talked about three million. And then that budget balancing is that tool I talked about of just kind of allocating the resources as we need them. So I, contribution to fund balance is what the negative numbers are in twenty-six and twenty-seven, use of fund balance in twenty twenty-eight. So it nets out to um, a use of fun balance. Um, sorry, contribution still in twenty-six and twenty-seven use in twenty-eight, twenty-nine. Um, but you see that projected fund balance, sorry, use in twenty-six. Projective fund balance starts at sixty-eight million um, in twenty twenty-six. Um, is where we would project to end twenty twenty-six based on the current fund balance. Sorry, I do know. Um, in Q two projections, we were um, starting the fund balance at sixty-eight point three million dollars. Um, so this is saying we project to end twenty twenty-six with sixty-eight point one, should be forty-one percent of the recommended twenty-six budget. Twenty-seven, we'd be at sixty-seven point nine million, which is forty percent by twenty twenty-nine. We're still looking at thirty-five percent, which is well above that twenty-nine percent target. Um, and it still retains the non-structural funds that we have been trying to reserve for emergencies of about ten million dollars. So we're not impacting that money. Um, we're just allocating some of the other money that has been made available.
Catherine.
But.
Well, speaking of wonky, um, I'll let you take a sip here. Um, the fund balance, the twenty-nine percent. That's a county policy. Is it tied to a federal mandate or a federal best practice?
It's the percentage is not tied to a federal mandate. Um, the percentage was determined when we were looking at how much fund balance we need to make it through the year until we start collecting property taxes in July to make sure that we don't have to borrow money to make payroll from January to July and not pay interest on that. That's more of where the calculation came from than a best practice, or that that percentage being mandated or a best practice, having fund balance is essential. Um, especially for bond rating. Um, so I will let, Tina wants to add more, but.
So it's a G F A.
Tina, forgive me. Will you move that mic?
The G O F A best practice. Um, but yes, it was an analysis of because our tax levy happens in July and we have six months of expenditures that we have to cover. That's where the twenty-nine percent assured that we covered that time period between um, collecting of our revenues.
If we change the timing at all on our budget, because I believe we've changed it in the past, would that in any way, shape or form ameliorate that concern or would that remain?
Well, it, it depends which way we go because we'd have to front the dollars or we would have more money on the backend. We'd still have a gap that we would have to potentially cover. We've uh, done that analysis a couple of times for the board.
Okay. So it's a, it's a mathematical requirement just based on the budget differences collection in, in terms of collection.
Correct, as well as GFA recommends at least sixty days, which the twenty-nine percent definitely puts us over the sixty days um, time period. But I will also say the shift of the tax levy happened when revenue sharing went away from the state back in uh, oh, oh, four, oh, five, oh, six.
Okay. It, it, the, the reason I'm not asking for some sort of radical intervention here, I'm just Catherine, to, to play in your word, emergency. Um, one way would be to, to view the next three years as an extended fiscal emergency, just in terms of the federal budget and, and, and what we're having to account for. So um, having options on the table is helpful. So that, that's all. Thanks. Uh, I, I saw Commissioner Scott and Commissioner Robbie.
Thanks. Um, what is the fund balance? Thank you, Chair. Um, what is the fund balance? Is there a percentage that impacts our, our Moody's bond rating?
Um, well, we start when our bond rating was increased for a couple of different reasons.
Yeah.
Um, our quadrennial budget was one contribution as well as our fund balance. And at that time, our policy was twenty percent.
Okay. Okay, that's all. There's probably questions that stem from that, but I'll percolate. Thank you.
Commissioner Robbie.
Uh, thank you, Chair. Given this discussion, I actually have two separate items, but the one is on this topic. Uh, since we are dipping into fund balance pretty substantially to fund these priorities. Uh, it would make me more comfortable, I think, if we considered actually increasing our uh, twenty-nine percent so that as we dip into fund balance, uh, we are improving the um, sort of like board set policy of how much money we're going to keep in reserve so that we don't play with fire, so to speak, and like get all the way down to that level in the future. So like, yes, we're going to all seven million dollars from fund balance over the next four years. But we're going to increase our sort of like commitment to financial stability and increase that number from twenty-nine percent to doesn't have to be thirty-five percent, but maybe like thirty-one, thirty-two, somewhere in there. Just a thought. Um, would make me more comfortable with taking this big financial hit to the fund balance. Um, I did have another question, but it's on a previous slide, so I can wait till the end.
Catherine, back to you.
Okay. Um, so where we end up, this is all of the different sides, total recommended budget. I will say this is not the most exciting budget I have ever been able to bring to you all. Um, there is a lot of nuts and bolts and trying to keep things together of the recommended requests, ninety-three percent are operational. Um, and we didn't cover thirty percent of the requests of the organization. Um, so there is a big need that is still out there. Um, but this is the summary of what the total recommended budget um, looks like at this time. I also wanted to go.
Go to Commissioner Hodge.
Okay. Um, sorry. Okay, I'm just because we talked earlier, um, winter sheltering and then the bicentennial have been added to the BOC priority allocations. We did not make any structural adjustments to the previous ones that were established. I just wanted to make sure you all had on the record what those BOC priority allocations um, are moving forward. So maintaining our contributions, I should change the name of the Eastside Rec Center to its proper title. I will get that fixed in the next slide. But so then lastly, um, I do want to highlight, there's a number of really interesting things and other operational needs that came through the budget request process that we were not able um, to find funding for. So one of the first ones on the list, the Youth Assessment Center that Derek just presented on. Um, I, the previous meeting and in previous discussions, we've talked a lot about that resource management inventory and where we're really allocating existing resources. And this really is a big push for trying to figure out what the best allocation is of our limited resources. And so just because we didn't have it in this budget, doesn't mean we can't keep those discussions going, keep trying to figure out the ways to meet those needs that we know are out there, whether they are operational um, or innovative and would make a big community impact. So um, this is a small sample, and even to just fund these, we'd need one point eight million dollars. Granted, based on the previous conversations, I would remove those Humane Society contract costs from that. But it was a sample of just different things, um, Eritreopolis, BOC sponsorship requests are items that we've been funding, but we have not ever, we have not budgeted. And so it's just constantly coming out of other line items. So we aren't able to solve those structural problems um, that we know are existing um, within this budget. Uh, so I just put a slide here of the priority-based budgeting. Um, that is how we use that resource management. We start doing that program budgeting. We get priorities from you all and we can work with departments. We can work internally to um, really try to get different ways of doing things or different ways of funding non-mandated services, et cetera, to make sure we're really best allocating and utilizing the resources that we have to make the biggest um, impact on our residents and community. And.
Catherine, real quick, one quick question related to your last slide. Just to be clear, we're, we're not budgeting sponsorships, but those are accrued costs that haven't been budgeted for.
Yeah, every year they're ongoing costs. Um, they frequently are funded out of vacant positions and admin is usually where we end up finding the funding for them, but um, they are ongoing. So we're not saying that we can't do it. It's just another item of, in the budget request process, it was, this is a thing that we know keeps happening. Um, but we have never had a budgeted allocation for it.
Okay.
Trying to look at those items. It's, it's just a sample of the other requests are similar to that of things that we know we keep doing, but we haven't been able to budget in the past.
Gotcha. Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Uh, Commissioner Sanders.
Have a question about court security.
Mm-hmm.
Can you elaborate a little bit more on what is that?
Uh, yes, there, I can elaborate somewhat. Um, there is an ongoing, there's a full budget request that you all received two weeks ago. I think we have an updated full request um, list. The one printed is just the recommended ones because I didn't want to give you all a two hundred page packet. Um, that details what all is in that. Um, the current court security operations are well over the budget for court security. They have been for years. It's not new to this administration. Um, but the ability to absorb it has changed. So the sheriff's office submitted a budget request um, to address that in their budget.
So to be clear, this is just for the current staffing? This is not to address the deficits in court security, which do exist, are currently existing. We don't have security in all of our courtrooms and
I can.
we are having issues. Okay, I, I'm asking that because I don't.
I will confirm if it addresses any of those existing.
Right. I don't think we should have any um, staff. Uh, specifically judges on the bench facing people jumping over barriers and all of that kind of stuff to get to them because we don't have appropriate security staffing in those courtrooms. And I know that is, that is factually what's happening right now. So I'd be curious to know what would it look like for us to actually provide that security for them? Not just what's current.
So actually I saw it looked like Sheriff Dyer raised her hand. Is that, is that an old hand raise? Or was that related to this question?
Chair, she doesn't currently have her hand raised, but she has had her hand raised in the past.
Great. Um, we'll go then to Commissioner Hodge, then Robbie.
Thank you. Do you want me to go now or do you want to wait till it's totally, you're totally done?
I, I.
We're done.
We're totally done. All right.
The last slide with questions.
Well, okay.
I'm so sorry.
All right. Well, thank you very much. I don't know that you anticipated the presentation being as long as it was, but you know how it goes here and you always do a very nice job. Uh, so I appreciate the, the detailed information. I wanted to express my gratitude for Eritreopolis making it into the budget recommendation. I think our, our partnership with them over the last several years has been particularly. over the last several years has been particularly fruitful.
It's not. It's on the list of things we can't afford to budget.
So I retract my comment. I now hate the presentation. No, so I would like for us to consider then, I guess I read it with optimistic eyes then, that's disturbing. I guess so. I think we can find a way to do it. We would be missing out on potential significant regional development opportunities and partnerships if we're not continuing our partnership with Eritreopolis. So I would hope we'll be able to find a way to make that a permanent budget item. Just expressing a hope here.
Nothing would preclude us of what we've been doing the past few years is finding savings elsewhere to be able to fund those allocations on a non-structural basis. We just haven't been able to secure structural funding, so nothing would preclude us from being able to continue trying to find it every single year.
Well, I'd love for us to find structural funding for it, and that be a priority. Well, I know there's a priority setting thing. Hold on, I got it. Well, go ahead. I got another question after that and comment.
I'll let Administrator Dill chime in.
It is not currently budgeted structurally. In years past, we have found a way to make sure that 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 agreement stays in on our radar and is funded. We expect to do that moving forward. Structural allocation of this amount will have to come back to the board, so if you all direct us to move down that path, we'll absolutely author the resolution for you. As of right now, we plan to find a way to come back to you all with a recommendation around Eritreopolis that continues the partnership.
But that last part, what you said sounded a little bit vague. So I mean, you said a piece around finding the structural funding, but then also at the same time, like, let's finding a way to keep the partnership strong. Can you clarify what you, your last sentence?
I cannot, because this is the framework that we have used over the last ten years for Eritreopolis. It hasn't been structurally funded in a very long time, and year over year, we've found a way to make sure that that agreement continues to be in place. And and our plan at this point is to continue down that path unless you all direct us otherwise.
Okay, well, I will, as Commissioner Somerville always says, write a resolution. Yes, yes. So I understand that. Thank you. To your other, to the rest of the presentation, loved it. I love the amount of effort, and it's clear how much effort has gone into it, along with the scoring system that has been used. Could you talk a little bit about how the recommendations relate to the scoring system that was used? And yeah, Andy, I know. She's hitting her watch at me. And then the other piece being around, we just saw this, what I thought, a tremendous presentation around the Youth Assessment Center, something that we've already committed some resources to over time. Where does that fit into the tapestry of what will be recommended along with the scores? Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, okay. We could get back on the scoring being related. We did look at scoring. But they're not all directly, like oftentimes those operational needs don't score the best, but they're essential to the fabric, but I can get you some better information on how those all tie together. In your packet does have how everything scored.
Yeah, I know. I was asking for, for the benefit of the audience, particularly the high school students that are wondering what we're doing here for the last many hours. Yeah.
We appreciate them, and we can definitely bring that back at the next working session to talk through how those all play out, as I'm having.
That's okay. You can read in the packet if you're curious. It's in the packet.
There's, yeah. Also, two weeks ago, we had a great working session on a lot of it, but for the Youth Assessment Center, that gets back to why I keep stressing the importance of like really looking at that priorities, priority based budgeting, because that is the type of allocation that in the past has been easy for us to find funding for. We know the impact. We know it's less than a hundred thousand dollars, and it was just hard in this budget to be able to do that. Most of the funding was really going to things that we already know are over budget, and we're trying to get the budget in alignment with what our expected costs are. That doesn't mean we can't try to find some creative solutions on ways to look into funding that.
All right, well, out of everything we talked about today, it all looks good, just really supportive of our ongoing partnership with Eritreopolis and the Youth Assessment Center, because as demonstrated by the audience here, the youth are a priority. They're a priority for us and for them. Now I'll stop. I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go to Commissioner Robbie. I've got some comments. If others have others, raise your hand.
Thank you, Chair. So I just have a few things. One, quickly on court security, my understanding there is that the sheriff has traditionally from well before this administration provided security to the courts, but not been reimbursed by the courts for that security generally. And so this is to reflect the lack of reimbursement and basically ask for more support for that. Is that correct?
There's not a direct reimbursement from, at least the county run courts. I can't remember how fifteenth district.
So like, I mean, like, we're not reminding folks that we have a lump sum budget agreements with the courts. And out of that lump sum, there isn't money going to support the Sheriff's Office for court security, is my understanding.
Yes, it's not directly funding court security in the Sheriff's Office. Yes.
So, and that's, I think so this is partially reflecting that we have this sort of sweetheart deal with the courts. They're getting the money, and then they're they're not allocating necessarily money to support the security in their court. It's coming out of the sheriff, the sheriff is doing it, has done it under Clayton, and now under Dyer is providing that service without reimbursement from.
Say with the courts being a general fund budget, it doesn't, it just shifts where that cost would lie. It doesn't change that the resources aren't in the operating budget, but wherever they would fall.
Right. Just really quickly, wanted to, on a different topic. I think we really need to do something about the sponsorship requests from the BOC. I know is in your agenda. We need some kind of a policy to guide that, and I would love to see a resolution come before the board on that topic to guide us through how those sponsorship requests get taken up. I think that's really important, since we're not voting on those items. They're just kind of happening. So I don't know, Chair, if that's something that's still a priority for you, but I'd love to see that come forward as soon as possible. The next thing is, it's not in our budget, and I think it kind of got lost in the process, but we still need a staff person for the Watch Not ID program. And I'd love to talk with our deputy clerk in the room about that. Our previous deputy clerk made that request of our last budget process. It wasn't funded. I didn't see that in the clerk's office request this year. I thought maybe it would be, but it was not. So that's still a major need, and I think it probably is even more of a need now than it was before. So just want to uplift that, and hopefully we can discuss that mid mid-year throughout this budget or even into the next budget that we do for twenty-six, for twenty-seven. So and then the last thing is just a light critique of the evaluation process. I whispered this to Greg last time, but I think that in the future, we should make sure that those that are conducting the scoring don't have any requests before the process. I know that we're all one organization, but I fear that some may advantage different projects unnecessarily if there isn't some type of strong control and third party sort of review, because it becomes sort of you know, subjective, and if you have money on the line somewhere else in the budget that you've requested, it becomes potential for that conflict to exist. So obviously, we're too far down the road on this. Nothing we can do about it, but for future scoring processes, I think that should be a criteria.
And when we've, the peer review team this time and previous processes, folks were not allowed to score their requests from their own department. With the subject matter experts, that was harder if we're having you score every request to keep scoring balanced. So that is where on the subject matter scores where you'd see folks getting to weigh in on their own requests.
I mean, I get that, and I hear you. I think frankly, we shouldn't have them participate at all in the process, because if you have, if you have a request in somewhere else, even if you're a subject matter expert, the incentive is to score a project that's not yours lower, so that it has, your project has a higher likelihood of getting, I mean, I'm not saying anybody did that, but I just think you are creating, you know, creating the potential for conflict. The chair sounds like has a suggestion.
My suggestion was that we could score it like ice skating and throw out the highest and lowest scores on each, and that probably obliterates.
So that could be an action.
We could, we could definitely look at the scores and see what that would have done to these requests also.
There's something to consider for next time. You know, just thinking about that control mechanism in the process.
Happy to brainstorm ways to manage that.
Catherine, I really appreciate the presentation tonight. You always do an excellent job. Thank you. I'm not a hundred percent on board with all the requests. I'm not sure anybody is, but just wanted to give you my take on that. The quarter mill for the two hundred celebration, I'm gonna have to grapple with that a little bit. But procedurally, I think you've done an excellent job laying this out. Makes sense. It's clear. So I just want to give you and Tina and your teams public appreciation for that.
Thank you. It will be at future working sessions. It's on the board agenda until the budget's passed, so.
Yes, and it's on tonight under current and future discussion. So any other comments? We'll go to Commissioner Somerville. Is your hand up?
Anybody else have a hand up?
I think Commissioner Robbie did. I was gonna go to you if you've got. Hold on. Whoa, 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 whoa. Hold on. Before we adjourn, because we have a few items to get to.
I withdraw my motion. Continue.
Thank you. I was purely gonna say the chair has indicated we'll take fifteen minutes before the, before the next meeting. All right, we are adjourned. We'll meet back at eight ten.
So we just skipped that whole one though.
Always in order, non-debatable.
I am asking corporation counsel. When you've got a law degree.
She just told you what I said, right? Thank you. I love you very much.
I don't respond to it. I mean, like, you know, like one thing and she said me and something, and I'm not chair, now I'm chair, and so I'm like, what am I even?
Sorry, Andy, I didn't, I thought that's where we were on the agenda. I didn't.
Thanks for sticking with us. It was more than fifteen minutes. I'm not gonna lie. There was a birthday cake there for me. And I wanted to eat some of it. Thanks. All right, we'll, um, call this meeting of October fifteenth, twenty twenty five to order, and we start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. So I am very excited to present this resolution recognizing Washtenaw County WIC for their National Breastfeeding Award of Excellence as, yes, big cats, big cats. And I say this as when I was first elected, I was a breastfeeding mama. And when I toured the health department, I got to use the nursing room during our, our, our day of, of tour. Yes. So, all right. So let's get into this. Uh, whereas the Washtenaw County Women, Infants and Children WIC program is a twenty twenty five breastfeeding award excellence winner, advancing from gold to premier over the past three years. Recognized for their outstanding breastfeeding support by the U.S. Department of Agriculture, demonstrating a commitment to growth, quality, equity. And whereas Washtenaw County WIC is recognized with this prestigious award representing the entire Midwest region, not just the state of Michigan. And whereas WIC is a supplemental nutrition program for pregnant women and postpartum women, infants and kids up to five years old who are income eligible. Over half of babies born in Washtenaw County participate in WIC, and the Washtenaw WIC program supports breastfeeding families with peer counselors, certified lactation consultants, dieticians, and other qualified individuals that provide unwavering support to qualified families. And whereas Washtenaw County WIC was selected for this award because of their strong community partnerships and efficient protocols and dedication to serving with excellence. And the award recognizes the WIC's teamwork to continually assess and respond to community needs. And whereas the WIC program serves nearly five thousand women, children and their families in Washtenaw County each year, and actively addresses health inequities and disparities as they relate to maternal and child health by providing inclusive, appropriate services in multiple languages. And whereas the National WIC Breastfeeding Award of Excellence program was established to recognize local WIC agencies that have provided exemplary breastfeeding promotion and support activities and highlight innovations planned by local agencies to increase breastfeeding initiation and duration rates among WIC participants. And whereas Washtenaw County WIC remains steadfast in its goal, increasing breastfeeding um, intonation as evidenced over the last three years, during which time the initiation rates have grown by more than two percentage points, raised, rising from eighty in twenty twenty two to surpass eighty two as of April twenty twenty five. And whereas the Washtenaw County Board of Health recognized and celebrated the WIC breastfeeding team with a resolution on September twenty fifth, twenty twenty five, and is grateful for their dedication. Now be it therefore resolved. The Washtenaw County Board of Commissioners is pleased to recognize and celebrate the WIC breastfeeding team.
Hello. My name is Gayatri Akala. I'm the supervisor here at the Washtenaw County WIC program. Um, just want to give you a little synopsis that I wrote about the WIC program. The WIC program is one of the most impactful public health investments in the nation. Participation is linked to a thirty-three percent. Participation is linked to a thirty-three percent lower risk of infant mortality and saves two dollars fifty cents in healthcare costs for every dollar spent. Washtenaw County WIC serves over four thousand participants each month, generating an average of two hundred and eighty thousand dollars in grocery store spending locally with breastfeeding initiation rate of, we've spoken about that, eighty-two point five four percent, well above the state rate of seventy-four point two three percent and national rate of seventy percent. We're proud to be a USDA, a highly prestigious, recognized premier champion of breastfeeding support, serving a diverse population with a multilingual team and standing as a model agency at both the state and national levels for innovation, efficiency and high quality services. On behalf of the entire WIC team, thank you for this resolution recognizing our achievement. Thank you, everyone.
Okay, uh, so at this time we'll have public participation. If you would like to participate or give comment at this meeting, you can approach the podium. The microphone is on, we left it on. Um, and then there'll be a series of lights that let you know about the time. Green means go. Yellow means wrap it up and red means your time is up. Um, I'll try to let you finish the thought, but we'll interrupt you if you go into the red for too long. And with that, um, anyone here for public participation? Oh, look, there's someone now.
Derek Mayhew, Ann Arbor, thanks for letting me speak. And there's some students here tonight, I think. Um, well, fun fact, kids, elections in the county are determined by four people and two of them are sitting behind you. If you turn around and look, they'll probably wave to you. Board will vote on two more tonight and I'm here to compliment the board. It's obviously took your job seriously. You took extra time to try to figure out who the right candidates were. And I think it's important that the public come in and recognize occasionally that you do good work. So thank you for slowing down and, and really trying to, you know, the two people they vote on tonight will be in place for the next four years, including twenty twenty-eight presidential election and they will issue the certificate of determination for that election. So nicely done. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Um, if you haven't been here for a public comment yet, we don't respond to each comment as it comes. We respond at the end as a whole. So if there's, just come on up and roll through the comments if there's anybody else here for public comment.
Um, good evening commissioners. Um, my name is Jerry Howe, student at Slay High School. And I'm here to talk about, uh, like cell jamming, specifically within schools. So as far as I know, I, I've researched to like types of cell jamming, active and passive. Um, active is illegal in the United States, but passive is perfectly legal and it creates a dead zone within specifically our school. There are like some areas that are highly populated that I think we need to bring attention to. Uh, these include the band room, the pad room and a majority of our basement area. Um, I'm not sure if this is known to the school at all as they don't use or they do use ethernet in certain classrooms, but that just may be because like the wifi signal isn't as strong. Um, in terms of the cell jamming, these, this can actually cause like very dangerous situations within the school. Uh, such as in the case of an emergency, emergency services cannot be contacted within the school on because cell cannot be reached and you cannot make a phone call. Um, this leads to a very like disastrous, potentially disastrous situation, putting, you know, many lives at risk. Um, and I think this needs to be like, I guess, more recognized considering the like uptick of school intruder related incidents in recent years. Thank you.
Good evening, Jeremy Haley, Ipsy Township. Uh, I'd just like to talk about, um, possible pattern that's been developing or that I've been noticing in Washtenaw County in some areas. There was a fire on Michigan Ave in Ipsy Township in May. And upon going to that fire, they found it was to be a illegal marijuana grow operation. They found six to seven hundred pounds. Next thing I'd like to bring up is downtown Ipsy, if you go there in the evenings and whatnot or during the day, sometimes you'll see a old man walking around hunched over on a walker going down way. He was recently robbed. And that was caught on camera. Next thing was in one of the establishments down there. A woman was found doing things to herself in the female bathroom in the middle floor. And all those things have in common as their crimes and they should be looked into and whatnot. The other thing they have in common is, I was told by the Ipsy, at the last Ipsy Township meeting is that Washtenaw County Prosecution is not prosecuting marijuana crimes no more. But don't you think a million dollar illegal girl should be prosecuted? Uh, in Ipsy, the guy that was robbed was caught on camera. The Ipsy police officer didn't do nothing. A woman in the bathroom, same thing, called the police. Did this happen? Nothing. And the township attorney was told this by the deputies that he, what the prosecuting office not prosecuting marijuana crimes. There's a pattern that basically I think is coming down from the top down from the prosecutor's office that he's dictating what crimes to be arrested for and charged for. And I heard some of you saying there's a discrepancy in things. That's because they're being fixed from the top. This man needs to come in here and say something. I see this sheriff, why not him? I challenge him. I don't think he has the courage to, to come answer for himself. I don't think he really does. Okay? I'm calling him out that he needs to be called out. He's failing the people of Ipsy Township. He's failing the people of Ipsy. He's actually, how would any of you like to have an illegal marijuana grow of over a million dollars in any of your districts? And not be charged. Okay, this needs to be highly investigated coming from the deputies on down to, you know. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the room for public comment? Ashley, is there anyone online for public comment?
There is no one online for public comment chair.
Great, fantastic. At this time we move to Commissioner follow-up to public participation. Any commissioners would like to follow up to that public participation? Commissioner Light?
I just wanted to say thank you and congratulations to our WIC program. Um, you know, breastfeeding mamas, we need all of the assistance, encouragement, um, and support possible. And I just want to say, I know personally, um, that Washtenaw County, um, that our WIC program, they rock. Um, even though I was not eligible for WIC itself, I still was able, I wa- I was able to utilize um, services for the support for breastfeeding and all of that. And I really didn't need it, but they were there. Um, and so I just want to give kudos and, um, just thankful, um, that they are continuing to grow and give our county the support. I would like to thank the young man that came forth, um, and presented that. You guys encouraged and thank you and we will make sure, um, that we look into, um, that item and, and keep in contact. And lastly, um, Jeremy, thank you for always bringing us information, um, that we may not know about. Uh, and so that is definitely some things that, uh, we need to look into and, and follow up on and I'm just gonna say thank you and continue to, to bring us the information because I did not know. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Sanders?
I should have been in that photo with you as a former WIC.
Oh, you totally should have, yes.
And breastfeeding, uh, mother. Uh, I just want to say congratulations again to the WIC office. I know that it, um, the services that I received, albeit twenty years ago, um, absolutely were the difference between me and my daughter eating and, and eating healthy. Um, and I just appreciated the support. It was sorely needed, um, and it was utilized. So I'm just happy that it's still in existence and still supporting, uh, mothers and their children. So congratulations.
Thank you. Any other commissioners for Commissioner Beaman? I thought I saw your hand, but then I didn't see it again, so.
Thank you, Chair. Um, I want to thank everyone who came and spoke tonight, including Dirk. Thank you for thanking us. We don't get that a lot. Um, but for Jerry about the, uh, cell jamming in, uh, Celine schools, appreciate you coming forward to speak to us. That really shows, uh, your willingness to engage in civil discourse and advocate for your school community. That shows your leadership skills and that's really a powerful example. Um, the county commission doesn't directly oversee school operations. Uh, that's your school board. And I would encourage you to advocate in that venue as well with those elected officials as well. Uh, but your, your experience, what you are facing does help us understand the broader implications of what's happening in the community. So I do thank you for, for bringing that forward. Um, and again, you know, your civic engagement and just, just keep it up. I love seeing students here and having the opportunity to, um, engage with them. Uh, just one other kind of layover from our previous meeting. Uh, I do want to challenge the board as we move forward with these, uh, senior dollars to find ways to get them into the community, especially communities that haven't benefited from the senior millage dollars as of yet. Uh, selfishly District Three Mylan, uh, but also as we heard, um, from the phone call previously, just asking how other organizations can become involved and again, help our seniors during these difficult times. So, thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other Commissioner follow-up to public participation? Commissioner Somerville? Okay, uh, no more Commissioner follow-up. Um, I will, um, say also thanks to everybody who came out to have, um, public participation. Uh, I do love when people participate, especially having some of the young folks come and just, I will mirror what Commissioner Beaman said. I would love to be able to help you with the cell jamming, but I unfortunately can't tell everybody what to do, much to my chagrin. Um, I go to your school board meeting though, that would maybe the next place to go. So, um, and I also just want to echo the thoughts about the WIC program. Uh, I, when I was doing my public health program, uh, they, we did a critique. They said critique a program in your, in your county or your area. And I tried to critique the WIC program and there was little I could critique. Um, it's a fantastic program and, um, a lot of us mamas at the table, um, needed the support. We needed to get that breastfeeding done to try to, um, help out our kiddos going forward. So I appreciate that work they're doing. Um, next item on the agenda is com- is liaison reports. Any liaison reports? Commissioner Somerville?
Thank you so much. Um, so for the Commission, aging, I just want to update that at our last meeting, we received a presentation from Ageways on their latest needs assessment and it reinforced the, um, policy decisions that we all made around the framework for the, um, senior millage around housing, food and transportation. Um, at the meeting, there was also a conversation and expression of concern just around how the federal shutdown, um, will potentially impact, um, meals on wheels. Um, right now, Ageways, OCD and the agencies are all working together. Um, but we all on the Commission, the aging continue to worry and I know that there are some gaps for meals on wheels that already exist separately from what is currently happening with the federal government shutdown. So just want to elevate that again in line with some of the comments that you've heard me share before during my liaison reports for Commission on Aging. And then I just wanted to flag for everybody, um, I think Commissioner Labar and I have mentioned the ongoing challenges with the state putting out, um, the RFP related to, um, the, uh, regional, um, PIHPs. And so there was a court of claims, uh, decision relating the RFP and what authority the state, um, health department has and, and what, um, they can't, can and can't do. So I'm going to forward a communication that we got, um, from our attorney, um, at CMH. I'll send it to Ashley so she can make sure that everybody gets it, um, just so you all can be updated on that. But, um, it's kind of stuck in legal and the legal process right now. So, thanks.
Thank you very much. Uh, next person is Commissioner Hodge.
Thank you, Chair. Really quick one today from Food Policy Council. Uh, they'll likely have a resolution that they'll send to us as a communication. Hasn't happened yet, uh, but it's gonna, they want us to look at, um, how we could use some of the space at the Eastside Community and Rec Center for food sustainability and combating some of the food insecurity issues in the county. So it's something that's come up at their meetings. I think they're going to have a resolution possibly at the next meeting that'll be in our communications. If it is, I'll mention it then. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Labar.
Sure. Uh, just in terms of the liaison report under the COC, um, I just sent to Ashley and Ashley, if you can get that out to the board, thank you. Um, there's talk of a proposed cut at HUD, uh, that would kind of decimate the, uh, uh, sustainable housing services that we, that we have and the funding. It's designed to move it to transitional housing, uh, but what this administration is not quite understanding is, uh, the service population. Right now eighty-seven percent of, uh, COC funding nationally is used for this purpose, uh, which is, which is permanent supportive housing. Uh, this would reduce it down to thirty. And so I flagged this just because coupled with some of the other machinations that are going on at HUD, including layoffs last week, um, we need to be aware of some pretty big possible changes coming in homelessness, uh, funding. Um, and, uh, unfortunately myriad issues that will be exacerbated by that downstream. And so, um, I just flagged that. Please, if you get a minute, read the, uh, read the article. Um, and feel free to attend the COC meetings. Thanks, Chair.
Thanks very much, Commissioner. Commissioner Robbie?
Thank you, Chair. I'll keep this brief. Uh, just a few quick updates from the Environmental Council, um, we met last night. And so just some stuff to expect on our end. There was a presentation about the biodigester and freedom township. Um, and a long conversation about the, uh, solid waste management plan that's being worked on. I mentioned Commissioner Macheski's are point person on that. So somebody may be in touch with you at some point. But there was some conversation about doing, um, a, an advisory resolution on, uh, a number of different environmental factors relating to that plan. Um, we are next month going to hear from CARD, which is a group that we're all part of Coalition for Action on the Remediation of the Oxane. That group, I think is going to be coming, uh, is going to be asking the Environmental Council to recommend to us, uh, that we, um, sort of like reaffirm our commitment, which I think we're all committed to already, sort of a symbolic thing, but something to help, uh, push along the process. Our health department's already been very involved with CARD. Um, and it card is sort of a, an or- organism that we, we created many years ago as Washtenaw County. So I think that they're just hoping for an infusion of support, uh, from us. Um, and they're, uh, so there's future conversations to come on that. I just wanted to give folks a heads up on those two things. Um, SEMCOG, we got a quick presentation on the new bridge to Canada, uh, from the Canadian, uh, council. And I just saw recently that there was an announcement that the bridge opening was delayed until twenty twenty-six. So unspecified time, but twenty twenty-six. So, uh, still to be seen on that. And then lastly, I know we're gonna, I think it's on the agenda, right, for the rec center, but we're gonna be, our meeting was postponed. It was supposed to be yesterday, um, but it's been moved to the twenty-second, uh, because we're going to be reviewing, um, the, oh, I won't even say it then. I'm, I'm gonna let the administrator say it. We're gonna be reviewing something.
I know.
But I'm not gonna say anything else about it.
Rude. Okay.
All right.
Any, thanks, Commissioner Robbie.
What a teaser.
Any, uh, Commissioner Light?
Uh, myself and some other commissioners and some of our staff had the opportunity to go, um, to the GFL landfill. And And I came back and I was like, oh my gosh, this is so freaking awesome. I, I just did not imagine. And so look, took my gym shoes. I had on sandals. I switched them in the car. I could have worn my sandals up on top of the landfill. It did not stink. It didn't seem like it was like any kind of contamination. The cleanest landfill ever. So we have a picture. I have to show y'all. That out. So, you know, it's so many amazing things that are happening there. You just would not imagine that you're out in the landfill and you do not smell anything. Like, I promise, I'm not telling any lie. And the opportunities of employment, it's diverse. It's, it's, it's great. And did you all know that in my township, in Salem Township, one of the townships in District Two, where the landfill is, they don't have to pay tax, property taxes because the landfill covers it? So if you're looking for somewhere to move to and you don't have to pay the property taxes, Salem Township is it. And you're not going to smell anything. So that was a great opportunity for individuals that are, because you know about the expansion of the landfill. Go there, get a tour, get the information. It is not what you think it is. And the expansion is not expanding outside of the area that is already there. I learned so much. And it was just like, everybody was like, why are you so excited about this? I'm like, because I got factual, real like information. I've seen it for myself. I smelled it for myself. And so I encourage everyone to really, to call. And the director, he's like, hey, I'm available. I'm excited about telling you. So it was a great experience.
Thank you, Commissioner. If you'd put the picture of the day I went, you wouldn't have seen. Oh wait, oh, can she do it? You don't have to do it. You can't see anything when we went because it was so foggy. But I know it was a little disappointing, but it was also a little scary because you drove up those tracks and we couldn't see where we were going. It was like we were going to drive off into a cloud. But I will echo your accolades of the director there. It was very knowledgeable and very passionate about what he did. And it's really nice to see somebody with that amount of passion for the work that they're doing. Any other liaison reports? Okay, I see none. Next is the report from the county administrator. I wonder what you're going to talk about.
Thank you, Chair. And I also want to thank you for pausing Commissioner Robbie as he attempted to steal my topic this evening. Three items this evening from the Eastern Washtenaw Community and Rec Center. There are a significant amount of, there is a significant amount of progress happening in, in, with that project. And I, and I just want to say thank you. As a resident of this community, I want to say thank you first to the County Board of Commissioners. Secondly, to Megan Von Filio, our Parks and Rec Director. And then lastly, to the Parks and Rec Board for the work that's happening there. It is significant. Beginning with the TAP grant application submitted to SEMCOG on October 1st. It is to create pathways and mid-block crossings. Those crossings will link Superior and Ypsilanti Township. So pretty excited about that. We're requesting $2 million for the project and the Parks Commission has committed $400,000 in matching funds. That, I believe that's huge. The Architectural and Engineering Services Selection, as Commissioner Robbie attempted to communicate, there is a special meeting planned on October 22nd. As some of the Parks Commissioners, County Commissioners that sit on the Parks Board know, there, we had fifteen proposals. That was distilled down. There are interview, there were interviews conducted on October 10th, 9th and 10th. And the award is planned for that special meeting on October 22nd. It's at 5:00 PM at the LRC, so please come i- if you want to hear the dialogue. And then lastly, to the Construction Management RFP, the bids were advertised on October 19th or scheduled to be advertised on October 19th. They will be due on November 13th and the actual bid award will happen on December 9th. So as you can see, a lot of progress is happening. And so thank you to this board for really leaning in and creating the framework for this to occur. That will conclude my report.
Thank you so much. Any comments, questions for our administrator? Great. I see nobody. And I have no report from the Chair of the Board. And I think if I did, Commissioner Somerville might kill me. Look at, look at her acting like innocent. She was just doing two massive thumbs up and then I looked at her. Oh my God. Okay. There are no special orders of business. I'm wondering if somebody would like to move the appointments. Okay, we are going to roll call the appointments.
Commissioner Beaman.
Yes.
Commissioner Hodge.
Yes.
Commissioner Labar. Commissioner Light.
Yes.
Commissioner Macheski.
Yes.
Commissioner Robbie. Commissioner Sanders.
Would he say it?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott.
Yes.
Commissioner Somerville.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much. Next item is the consent agenda.
So move.
All right, that's a voice vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. Would anybody like to move the resolutions, Commissioner Labar?
Next, Chair. Under resolutions, there are none for first reading. Under final reading, there is A, a resolution adopting the exemption for option PA 152 of 2011 with negotiated premium sharing. For single reading, A, a resolution establishing the Washtenaw County Space Plan Steering Committee and adopting bylaws. B, a resolution recognizing Washtenaw County WIC. And then F, or excuse me, for approval of claims.
Is there support?
Support.
Anybody want to move anything out for separate consideration? Any comments, questions, concerns on any of these items? Commissioner Robbie?
Thank you, Chair. Just to let the clerk know, I'll be abstaining from item A in keeping with my previous abstention due to the potential conflict of interest that exists there. On item, single reading A, establishment of a space plan steering committee. Just a couple of things I wanted to point out. There's a typo in the resolution. Should be ministerial and does not require an amendment. There's, there's a sentence that's repeated. So I just wanted to flag that for the clerk.
Okay.
And I don't have it.
What's that? I can see Andrew. I said, it's okay. You're human.
You're human. It's okay. Yeah, not, definitely not trying to. And then I, I don't have it pulled up, but I also noted that in the bylaws, the, there's specific positions. There's three commissioners and then like the administrator designee and stuff like that. And then it has terms of office designated. I think that section is redundant because if the administrator is the administrator, they don't need to be on a three-year term. So I would recommend that we strike that section. And I would make that motion.
Support.
Okay, let's talk about that motion to strike the terms from the language. Anybody have any discussion on that? I do not. Okay, let's do, go ahead.
Does, I just want to make sure that the attorney doesn't have any issues with that.
She does not. She is shaking her head.
Right. Because it's, I mean, the, the BOC has to be appointed every year anyways.
Right.
And the others are by virtue of their position, so.
Okay, let's vote on that motion, please, to the space plan bylaws to remove the terms. Brendan, who's looking at me like, stop talking and I'll do the vote. Okay.
Commissioner Hodge.
Yep.
Commissioner Labar.
Yes.
Commissioner Light.
Yes.
Commissioner Macheski.
Yes.
Commissioner Robbie. Commissioner Sanders.
Yes.
Commissioner Scott.
Yes.
Commissioner Somerville.
Yes.
Commissioner Beaman.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Fantastic. Okay, so we're back to any of the, we haven't necessarily polled anything in particular here. Any other comments, questions or concerns on any of these other items? I see none. And so we'll vote on all of these items at this time. Brendan, thank you.
Commissioner Labar.
Yes.
Commissioner Light.
Yes.
Commissioner Macheski.
Yes.
Commissioner Robbie.
Abstain on item 2A. Yes on the other two.
Commissioner Sanders.
Yes.
Commissioner Scott.
Yes.
Commissioner Somerville.
Yes.
Commissioner Beaman.
Yes.
Commissioner Hodge.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Fantastic. Great. Next item on the agenda is items for current and future discussion. We have the budget discussion. We talked about it a lot at working session. But this is a time, if you have anything more you want to say or anything extra that didn't get said in Commissioner Labar's discussion of that item at working session. Commissioner Light, thank you.
I just want to reiterate that we need to reevaluate, revise and look at the contract for the Huron Valley association because it's not working out. Two million is too much.
Thank you. Commissioner Sanders?
I think I had a concern about Commissioner Robbie's discussion about the sponsorships from commissioners. I have asked and received from administration, a, I think they give it to us quarterly, a report that tells us how much each commissioner has asked for discretionary funds for their district. And what I notice is that we have commissioners that never ask for anything. But we also have commissioners that do ask for support for their districts. This year, I am one of them. Typically, when I ask for support, it is county-wide. It's to support programs that benefit all of our residents, not just my district. I'm just concerned about any, any types, any type of attempt to sort of restrict that ability. It has to be up under, you know, it's under a hundred thousand. And I think absent of us agreeing to give each commissioner a set amount of money to be able to spend in their district, I don't think that it's necessary that we try and find a way to make it even more difficult or to curtail our ability to support our constituents in our districts. I also think that because this is very much an equity issue. When you see that the, the requests are coming mostly from the eastern side of the county, that is very telling about the support that is needed and has not been met in the previous decades. So I, I would, I would have to, I would have to debate the debater if we were to do something like that. So I say that with, with all good, good intention. But I would, I would, I would have to gird up, debate the, the debater. I think that it's as fine as it is. And I think that the report that I have asked for and that we all receive creates a level of transparency. So we all know where the money is going. And I don't think there, for the most part, are any frivolous requests. And it's all, it's all for the benefit of the residents. I can defend my asks. I won't speak for anybody else. But I can defend my asks down to the penny. So that's just my comment.
I'll make a note, is something that I talked to Commissioner Robbie about doing, just in terms of having the money be transparent and, and at the table for the public to know also, I think is not a bad idea. And so I would love to, and part of the reason I haven't been like, I'm not sure how to, to make a change that recognizes the truth of everything you said, along with making sure that I want people to have the transparency of that. This is the first time I've done that this year. You can see on the report. It was a big one from me and I felt really good about that request and making it. And it was a request for Alpha House. And I felt fine about making the request and doing it, but also a little bit, had a little bit of anxiety about it as well, just in the sense of wanting things to be transparent and wondering how we can do that. So I think that that report, I think that you asked for, I asked for, that's generated now to show that is one way to do it. But I'm open to thinking about other ways we can do that, just to make sure that people, people don't know what county government does. And some of that is a lot of that funding for programs that are very much needed. And I think if we were able to have discussions like that about those programs from the board table, it helps people understand more of what we're doing. And so I'm still trying to think around how we could do that in order to make sure that we're recognizing the inequities that exist and where those requests have come from along with the transparent nature of it. So the, the money requests are getting bigger, I think, as we've all realized we can do that. And so there is a finiteness to that also, that at some point we'll have to reckon with. I don't love the idea of giving commissioners an amount to give away to different organizations like that because I think that it also allows us to be lobbied in ways that I don't think would be fantastic for any of us. Yes, we already do, as I've seen, and I think this would make it worse. I'm going to go in order of the, where I've seen hands raised to this, and that's Labar, Somerville and then Robbie.
Thanks, Chair.
Yeah.
I think the substance of the spending is, is not the issue. I think if you look at most of these organizations or the, or the spending asks, they're usually for events or for a purpose that is understandable. Right now, we're putting the administrator in an impossible spot though. Because they are under the administrator's purview because of the amount, but then the aggregate is not. So we've, we've, we've crossed the $200,000 threshold, apparently for this year or on pace to. I think we have to probably blend both process and transparency. I think the reports are a good thing. But I think we need to set a, a limit on how much can go to that. And it probably needs to be for the body as a, as a, as a total, so that it's not essentially sort of a, you know, a commissioner spend account. I'm happy to work on that question. Again, I don't think that the purpose of the spending is off. I think the process has to match it. I'll also say, part of the challenge here too is this body is set up on an agrarian, late 19th, early 20th century calendar, right? I mean, we, for God's sakes, we, we technically only had to meet once a year to pass a budget. The world is faster today and we, we have to, you know, keep up with it somehow in terms of the, the processes of this board. I don't have the answer, but I'm happy to work on it. On the Humane Society, I, I don't want to get into that conversation too much tonight other than to say, whatever decision would be made, I would implore us to, to, to take time and space on that decision to get it right and candidly to, to have room for the process. I think I was involved in, in contract negotiations on that in 2017 when I was Chair. Yusuf was here when they did the rigmarole around 2011. Those are meaty substantive discussions happening over months. And so I would just ask us to consider that on that issue, that, that we may want to look at a three to six month sort of horizon rather than two. That's just my opinion and appreciate the venue to, to share. Thanks, Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Labar. Commissioner Somerville?
Thank you. I just had a question for staff. Can you just clarify the, like when we ask our administrator to sponsor something under the $100,000 threshold, which is in his purview, that is trans, made transparent to the public already?
That's correct.
Just wanted to highlight that because I love the word transparency and actively being transparent, but we are currently being transparent about that. I don't want people to be confused. And I'll just say, in my district, when you look at the opportunity index, I have the highest concentration of low opportunity out of all nine districts. out of all nine districts, and a lot of things happen in my district where I call Greg and need something to happen very quickly. And I'll just give you an example. In the last year, I asked the administrator to approve a twenty thousand dollar allocation to get legal representation for tenants at Arbor One. Um, and so those are the types of things that I'm very comfortable asking for. Um, and they're just situations that need a quick response and sometimes a costly one. I mean, in my first year on the board, we had a situation where a number of downtown businesses in the city of Ypsilanti were on the verge of closing um due to a lot of factors, and we were able to quickly step in and do like a matching grant with the DDA to keep some of those businesses afloat when three, like at the time, three businesses had closed, all within like the span of like one or two months. So I just want to highlight that part of county government is being able to react in emergencies, and I don't personally, as one of nine commissioners, want to make it more difficult for any commissioner to react to either an emergency situation or just challenges in their district. If it is something that's already in the administrator's authority and it's something that we are already being transparent about. I've personally shared on my own, like social media, like a detailed list of um sponsorships that I've asked for. Um, and I'm, you know, I think I would encourage others, like use the tools that you have, and I think we could even update the Board of Commissioners landing page on our website if commissioners want to highlight projects that they've supported in their district. Um, it would, you know, because we always want people to know what we're actually funding, but I just want to point out, these things are publicly posted, and I don't want to make it more difficult to be able to respond to challenges or positive things happening either, because sometimes organizations come to us late and need support for an event that they're hosting that is a benefit to constituents. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Robbie?
Thank you Chair. Uh, on that note, Greg, where is it posted? Where can a member of the public find that list?
So we have an open book that, that uh leans into all of the transactions that, that uh we, we author or approve. I think we can do a better job as an organization of highlighting or separating out what is happening in commissioner districts, and we're certainly committed to that. In fact, uh probably there are a number of different steps that we could add to make sure that there is transparency uh around those requests, including board leadership. So.
So if I log on to Open Book now, I can see what each commissioner requested and what was funded?
You can see all of the transactions.
And it says which commissioner requested it?
Does not. Yeah, I don't know that it goes to that level of detail. Uh, it probably would require uh a deeper dive for you to be able to uh.
So that's not really accessible to the public, to that level of detail? Right?
Yeah. Yeah.
I mean it. So uh similar to what Commissioner Labar said, fundamentally, you know, this isn't about, I'm not gonna debate the matter of whether your districts need more resources or not. I have long advocated that my district does not should be a district that is a donor district in many ways, and that I want to support the projects in your districts that need it. All I'm saying is that fundamentally, these should not be commissioner allocations. These should be board allocations. They should be coming from this table, from this body. It's not money that is your district's money. It is money that belongs to all the residents of Washtenaw County. And so if there is an allocation that needs to happen, that should come back to this table, and we should be able to vote on it to allocate it towards your district. It's never happened in my experience at the county board. And I don't know, Greg, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but this is, this is a new practice. Um, having folks go to the administrator directly and ask for an allocation under that hundred thousand dollar limit. Um, and there's no limit to the amount of time somebody can ask to do that. So in theory, you could run up a tab of multiple millions of dollars. Um, right? I mean, you, I, I could come every month and ask you for ninety nine thousand dollars. Um, and I think it puts you in an awkward position as the administrator. I think it's unfair to our county administrator to have this exist without any type of guardrails of any kind um that put any kind of dollar amount restriction. I mean, I'd rather see a scenario where there's a specific pot of money that is limited uh that commissioners each get allocated. There's different models for this. At the state level, they have earmarks uh that are now, you have to claim the earmark. If you're a legislator, you have to say, this is for me, and I've requested it, and it's got funded in the budget, but even then, it's voted on by the body that makes the decisions, which is the House and Senate uh and signed by the governor. It goes through the normal lines of procedure there. Um, and so I don't see any reason why, it feels improper to me frankly, to have a system where a commissioner can go and not have a public discussion about how public dollars are being spent, but just ask the administrator to make an allocation without a public process whatsoever. And then the administrator will make the decision, yes or no, this gets funded or it doesn't, and the level that it gets funded. Um, and it's, and then ultimately, the people on the other end are seeing it as a commissioner, one commissioner delivering something where it is not that one commissioner delivering it. It is the whole board of commissioners. It is money that is all the taxpayers of Washtenaw County's money that is going to these different projects. So it should be voted on at this table in front of the, the public, who are the ones, the taxpayers that pay for this. And that's the process that has always been normal. That is the process that should be followed at, at every step. And I'm not saying that the projects that you're trying to get funded are not good projects, and they're probably projects that I would support, but it should just go through a process that is uh functionally the process that we've used for decades at this organization and that are used in government, local governments and state governments across the state and across the country as a best practice. Um, and that's just where I stand, and I hope that we can de- develop and adopt a policy to reflect that. Um, and, and I don't think that's really too much to ask for.
So Chair, if I may, just to respond to a couple of things that Commissioner Robbie lifted up. Uh, so this practice has been in play in our organization for quite some time. And in fact, to this board's credit, there is more transparency around what we have been spending than there ever has been. Uh, and lastly, certainly as always, we will follow the lead of the board. If you all see uh wisdom and desire in changing tha- that framework, we will author the policy and adhere to the policy. I think lastly, what I'll say to, to the nine of you, and I think there's evidence around this, I have been intentional about making sure that I am conservative with the administrator's authority. I, I, I don't think that there's any debate around that. If there is, I'd love to have it. We can have it in a, in a public setting. Uh, and quite frankly, when asks move to a certain level, I'm always gonna have a conversation with the Chair of the Board. Now, if you want additional checks and balances, that is up to, to this body to decide.
Well, how long has this been going on, and what is the dollar amount that's been allocated in pa- in years past?
So I mean, I, I go back to my early tenure in the organization, which is over twenty years. Though these kinds of requests had always occurred, not to the dollar amount that is currently being talked about, but I just think when you think about the time value of money and uh some of the costs for some of these things inherent in that is that the, the amounts are gonna increase. So I can't give you definitive amounts, certainly at this board table. Uh, but again, I, I stand ready to modify our practices in any way you got, that you guys think is appropriate.
I certainly don't remember it ever getting even close to two hundred thousand dollars, or past a six-figure number even in the aggregate.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, so I, I just, you know, I, just to reiterate what I said, this is not in keeping with past practice. It has ballooned to a degree that is unsustainable, and it is not following a typical protocol that should be followed for any allocation of money.
Commissioner Sanders?
Uh, okay, so I'm gonna use the word transparency again. Um, and I, I, I'm, I wasn't happy that, when this occurred, but it has served me tremendously since. Uh, the travel fiasco. And uh I would say the attempt by some to malign myself and Commissioner Light. Um, and as a result of that, I am the one that asked for these transparency reports. I'm the one that asked for a travel report to be commit, to be um uh created that would show all of the commissioners' travel and their expenses. I'm the one that asked for the sponsorship report, and I've asked for another report that you all should have received or should be receiving soon. Because when you wanna, when you wanna pull out one person's, what you think is one person's dirty uh laundry, be prepared. I am the one that asked for those reports, and I think it's interesting to see the information. We all get it. You all have the ability to share it with your constituents if you so choose. It's public information. But I believe that based on the racial and, and economic discriminatory history here in this county for decades, that it's, I don't think that it is um, I don't think it's a good idea to have, all due respect, and let's remove people uh personally out of the, the, the districts, but I question having a well-to-do district tell another district it is not well-to-do. Oh, I don't think that's a good use of funding. Yes, it is all taxpayer dollars, but we don't distribute that equally. So I would, I'd fight you tooth and nail if you're gonna tell me that you, and I, and I live in a district that typically has not made an ask of me. Basically, has not made an ask of me. And so my sponsorships over the last couple of years have not been for my specific district. They have been for other people's districts, and because the events are countywide and open to everyone that wants to attend, and typically are always free events, but they need a little extra help to get them over the, the hump. So I, I'm, I, I have issues with this, with a, a suggestion that you want to tie our hands even more, that we have to come and grovel to some particular person uh for some support. The discretionary amount is a hundred thousand dollars, and I remember specifically when we had an attempt to lessen that amount. And I fought it, and I voted against it. Because our administrator should also have some flexibility, and if our asks are excessive, he has the ability and the duty to take it to the executive board. So let's not act like there aren't any, any checks and balances here. I, 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 you know, those folks that thought that they were going to uh do damage to me with this, with the travel, they made a mistake. And I get to wear that as a badge. So I'm not okay with that, and I would be loud about it. The information is transparent. That's why we have the reports. So if you want to share, share it all. Share your travel. Share your sponsorships, and also be able to explain to your constituents if they ask you for support and you don't provide it to them, and you can, why you don't. Cause I think that's very telling as well. When I have people coming to me that are not in my district, asking me some, for support, because their own commissioners won't respond or won't support them. That's problematic. But they come to me because they know I will ask i- if it makes sense. So I'm, I'm I'm ten toes down on that. We have not been fair or equal. There's a reason we have the racial equity office. And I have a problem with somebody that doesn't know the difference between a coupon and a hundred dollar bill telling me that I shouldn't be able to ask for ten dollars.
Well, I think Commissioner Sanders has uh made a point, but I'm just gonna back it up. I don't need anybody to manage me and tell me how to do my job, because I believe I do it well, not just for District Two, but for all, for the whole county. And what we are not going to do is try to make it seem as if we're being wasteful, or we should have to come to the board. We meet twice a month. The, the things I ask for are urgency and emergencies. It, it can't wait. And it's not going to wait for someone else, my colleagues, to say what they don't think I should be able to ask for. So I will not participate or even act like I'm in agreement with anybody from this board saying, oh, well, we need to, we shouldn't, we, it's transparent. I don't got nothing to lie about. I ain't going to prison for none of y'all. So I'm just saying now, don't tell me how to do my job when I'm not, because I do it right. And I do some of y'all's jobs some of the time, because you don't show up. So do not come with the bull. Do, don't come with it. And our administrator, he is our administrator for a reason. He know how to handle us. He know what to do. He not gonna let us come and spin, 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 because that's on his head. So let's be wise about that. He's not ignorant. So please do not come with that. The things that we spend on is necessary for our residents. All my asks are not monetary. So everything is not about money. It's about the support as well. But we not about to limit, and you not gonna tell me how I'm gonna do my job. I'm just telling y'all that now, because I will get in here and act a damn fool. So do not, we not going there.
Thank you. Um, I'd reiterate my willingness to work on a policy. Um, I think the question of transparency has been injected here when it's really timing. Tends to be we spend money at this board with the authorization of this board. There are certain uh limitations that, that occur on that, and that's why we've got the administrator's threshold. Makes perfect sense. But then those reports of contracts are in our uh packet. We approve them as part of the consent agenda. Um, this, by use of the word sponsorship, is a, a little bit different, because they're discretionary choices. And we don't have any for, uh, we don't have any prior authorization for any entity, and so um, we don't know where that's going till it's spent. We should rectify that, not seek to sort of limit uh commissioners doing well in their districts. I think that's good, and I also know um, the, the world is not always uh gonna meet our calendar, so we need some flexibility. But we've, we've gotta build an accountability to that, even if it's a retroactive process. So I'd reiterate my point there, and happy to work with folks on it. Thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner Somerville? I don't want to make you mad. I, I'd like to move to adjourn. Okay, all those in favor? Any opposed? Meeting is adjourned. Thank you. Thank you.